We are now.
How are you?
I'm good. You got your green on.
Yeah.
I'm Jessica Walker.
Hi Kayla.
It's nice to meet you Kayla.
Nice.
Mike DeHinton.
Nice to meet you.
You too. Tim Davis.
Hi Kayla, nice to meet you.
So great.
So you're getting this at our best. You're our first one of about.
Yeah, we're all fresh.
All right. So thank you for being here. So we have each of us, we basically ask one question sort of answer. We have four different questions. And as you go, you sort of answer them all. They're really serious questions. Hopefully you study.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so tell us a little bit about yourself and, and what you're, why you're interested in serving.
Okay. Um, I live in Temple presently. I think when I first applied, I was still in Belton technically. Or Bell County rural. I've since moved. I live in the city of Temple now. Um, I live in the hills of Westwood subdivision, so.
One of my kids is over there. That district.
District.
Four.
Yeah.
It splits in half. It could be used.
Oh. Maybe.
You want my hat? You want my new hat dress?
Cause some of our commissions are.
Yeah, yeah. Um, it's seven two one two Birds Nest Way.
The reason why we ask is we, we try to appoint to the various boards. Some of the boards require, if we can, so something that requires. So we prefer to put a varying.
Yeah.
You know, a widespread across the community.
Yes, yes.
Group on the board if we can. So we'd like, that's why we're.
Yeah, I noticed there were, you know, certain, however many slots for, for different.
Yeah.
A section. That's why I mentioned I, I, when I, it's been some time since I applied and I have moved since then, so. Um, but I have lived in this area. My dad lives in Rogers. I've lived here since I was in high school. Um, I work for a construction company, James Construction Group. Um, and I kind of got interested when we, we were not awarded a project specifically a city of temple project and I kind of went down the rabbit hole of just the, the inner workings of the, um, review and approval process of the proposals and it seemed like something that was kind of interesting. And I said, you know, let me see, that would be something different. Um, I am a cost controls manager for them, for James Construction. I've worked there about 11 years. Um, I love my job. It's a great place to work. And I've got kids that are here in this community, friends, family, everything else. So vested interest in the growth of the city of Temple and just like to be, you know, involved more, so.
That's wonderful. We appreciate that. The volunteer position, you know, ours is too. And, um, it's just, it's really kind of humbling when you see people show up and willing to give them their time.
So Jenna, we have just the one.
She, um, she's filled out an application for RZ, but you said you'd be willing to. Yeah, I mean, I'm open to, I, I don't have any specialized credentials or anything like that. So I did look through some of the other boards and commissions, but yeah.
Is there anything that just interests you in any other boards or commissions?
Board that doesn't.
Uh, no, I mean, I'm kind of open to, uh, my kids are older and so my schedule's a little more free now that, um, they're not old kids, but they are, it's a little bit more open. So like I said, just a little bit more involvement. There's not really anything that I would say is I have an aversion to, no. So.
Well, that's, it's nice that you work with a construction group. We have a couple of things like building standards, um, things that kind of need a little expertise. So if you don't have it, you could probably at least.
Yeah.
You know, pull from somebody at work and develop dangers for that kind of thing.
Yeah, it's kind of just interesting. Uh, you know, we primarily do work for TechSTAR and so I, that, like I said, I kind of went down the rabbit hole of just the municipality inner workings and kind of the process there. It's different. It's a lot different than TechSTAR. Um, and that, that was something that intrigued me a little bit, so. I'm open to whatever.
Okay, great. Super. Yeah, cause the rest of the questions like Tim said, I mean, they're all like, what would you like to accomplish as a board member? Uh, what skills, talents, experiences, would you bring to the position it is called, you know, pretty much when you introduce yourself, you explain what.
Yeah, it's pretty much, um, so in my position, I, I review some contracts, um, our owner contracts, pay estimates, um, our rest, our own internal estimates, uh, change order pricing, you know, processing and execution of those. Uh, lots of budget stuff and then our, our, just, uh, James Construction is owned by Prem Warren Services Corporation. So we are publicly traded, so we have all of those requirements, audit requirements that we have to adhere to. So that's a big chunk of mine, taking all the messy stuff we get from the guys in the field and getting it into an acceptable format that will pass an audit. So, um, yeah, I, but I started at James in a, an entry level position. I started as a field clerk there when I was still in college. I had no idea what I wanted to do and I found that I really liked working in that industry and it has, it has grown into a career for me now. So I've done a little bit of everything there, um, in as far as the office is concerned. So, yeah.
I mean, good.
I have two. I have a seventeen year old son and an eight year old daughter. She's almost eleven. So, yeah.
Do y'all ever use any of the parks in our systems?
Yeah, we do. Um, we, uh, my son played soccer all through school and so of course we were always at one of them or another, uh, practicing. Um, and then.
Just remember being the worst weather with soccer.
Yes, yes. It does rain that way. There's a really small window and it's nice, but it's not very long. It's either really cold or really hot. Um, but yeah, no, we, we get out and, and the parks, like I said, the growth in Temple has just been extraordinary in the last 10 years and, um, it's really interesting to me. So, yeah.
Did you graduate from Temple? You said.
No, I actually graduated from Rogers. I grew up in Hamilton, actually. I don't know if you know where that is. Um, and I moved to Rogers when I was a junior in high school and I actually graduated from Rogers. So, yeah. My son is at Rogers High School now, but my daughter, she's in Belton. We're in, uh, Belton Schools there in Westonville.
That's kind of the kind of.
Yeah, he was in Belton. It was just a little bit, it was just too vague of an environment for him. He's, he's really thriving in the smaller school environment. Um, as a small school kid, I thought I wanted my kids in a bigger school, but now I'm, I'm kind of second guessing myself. We've talked about moving, uh, my daughter to, or our daughter to, uh, Academy. Her dad's, uh, address is in, he lives in Temple as well, but his address is in Academy ISD. So we've actually considered moving, um, her to Academy, but.
Yeah, each kid's different.
Yeah, yeah.
Requires something different.
Your kids get smaller up in those big schools, you know, for kids of, you know, pretty good little athlete or what, probably only play one sport, but really.
Yeah. Well, COVID, when COVID hit, they, they shut, he was still playing, he was on a travel team, but they stopped everything. And when it picked back up, he just had no interest in getting back into it. So, yeah, when he got to Lake Belton High School, he didn't play any sports. He didn't really, you know, he's kind of just a, he's just a go with the flow kid. He's not really a standout. And I don't mean that in a bad way. He's just not a, he's not a big personality guy. And, yeah, it was, it was just swallowing him up and a lot of influences. And so he's, he's really thriving in that small school environment. So.
Good.
Yeah.
But being the, the stuff that you've done over at James, I assume even though you haven't been out in the field, you have a pretty decent field for construction, what's going on?
I do. Yeah. Yeah, I, um, we, so, you know, we, we handle our, our, uh, CPM schedules there at James. I understand sequence of work. Um, you know, some pretty basic land reading, uh, skills and pretty much whatever I can't figure out at Google. So.
You've probably worked with my, I have dealt contractors.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Done a lot with y'all in the last few years. I don't think that I remember your name or.
Yeah.
Jessica probably in my office talking with you.
Maybe so. Well, uh, so we have a, a actual contract manager, Chrissy. She and I work pretty closely together. So a lot of times there is some overlap, but most of that stuff does run through her, but pay estimates, things like that is, is probably the things that have come through me. Yeah. So.
That's what she does.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. When I, when we had the I-35 Temple job, I was assigned to that project. And so, yeah, I processed all the, hey, I think y'all had a contract. That was the job. Yeah. That's right.
Yeah, your name's not from any of your.
Yeah.
All right. Well, very good. We appreciate your willingness to.
Sign me up somewhere if y'all be used to me.
But did, did we answer the question of something that you just are not interested in? Did anybody go over those? I think I was switching chairs.
I, I don't, I, I looked through them all. Like I said, if, the only thing would be if it needed some sort of actual credentials, but there was nothing I really had an aversion to, no.
Are there, so these, these meetings, some of them like not.
Yeah.
Uh, if they're in the day, do you have any conflicts that there's eight, you know, thirty days of the week?
When does the service start? Um.
Uh, it'll start, what, April, April one?
Okay.
Yes, or October.
My only, my only constraint, I am donating a kidney at the end of April.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I say that like so, cause it sounds ridiculous, but yes, I am, I am, uh, scheduled for surgery on the twenty second of April. So I would miss a, a couple of months there, um, depending on exactly when it started and when the meetings lined up. But, um, but no, my, my schedule is pretty flexible. Uh, I, I pretty much kind of set my own schedule and schedule around the things that I need. So from what I can tell you, it's, it's laid out for pretty well in advance. So I should be able to make it work.
My cousin was gifted a kidney. So thank you so much.
Yeah. It's actually, um, so one of our superintendents who I've known for pretty much my whole life, he and my dad have worked together forever. Um, he is, he is the recipient and, um, it's just kind of a fluke. It's not a familial match and um, it, the condition he has is genetic so that his family is not able to donate to him. And I got tested back in, I started the process in July, August. I had no idea how invasive it was. I mean, it's so much testing. Um, and so we found out in November that we were a match. And then he had to, he had to finish some other stuff on his end. And so we just found out at the end of February that like we were ready to schedule. So we're on the books and, um, and I'm, I'm not really that nervous. I mean, I'm really hopeful and of course it's a, a chance that a lot of people don't have. So, um, yeah, it's, but we're close with our family. Um, his, his kids and my siblings went to school together. His daughter-in-law and, and I, uh, work together. And so it's, you know, it's a near and dear to my heart, but it's not a family member. It is just a friend. So.
What are the, what are the chances of being a match? Like one in?
Somebody asked me that. So a non-familial match, it's between one in a hundred and one in a hundred thousand. It's a really big range because there's just so many, because it's not just like a blood type match. It has to do with your antibodies in your blood. So, you know, people from similar regions or similar walks of life, similar, you know, um, ethnicity, that, that type of thing. He is Hispanic, I am not. So there are a lot of reasons I didn't think that we would be a match. We were really planning for a, um, donor swap. So they'll match me to someone else's, uh, recipient and that person has someone willing to give and they swap, but we are a direct match. So we'll, I will be able to donate to him directly. So.
You said you worked with, does your dad work at James?
Yeah, my dad. My dad's name is Joey. Joey Williams. That's my dad. Uh, but Francisco Lara is the recipient. He's been one of our superintendents forever and ever. And, yeah, him and my dad worked together a long, long time ago when I was a little kid. So.
What a great story.
Yeah.
That means you gotta keep your life plan to be sure and take care of your remaining.
Yeah, that's the main thing. I mean, the people on my side are, that's their, that's their biggest concern is what happens to you. And I said, well, really, you guys drink a lot of water. You gotta make sure you don't take any ibuprofen and some other stuff. Um.
Diabetes.
Yeah. And, and that's a good thing is that like in my family history, there aren't a lot of risk factors that would indicate that I would have kidney disease. But as a donor, you end up needing a transplant, you're at the top of the list, which was, which was a little ridiculous. Yeah. So as a living donor, you do get priority, um, if later in life I needed a transplant, but yeah.
Oh, interesting.
But that would be the only thing. Yeah. If, if, uh, hopefully that's not a deal breaker, but, um, otherwise I'm sure, I'm sure.
Hold that against you.
I'm sure we can make it work otherwise. So.
Absolutely.
Can I keep this or you?
I'm gonna.
Or you can change the transplant.
Yes.
Oh, so much more.
Let me call them now. Thank you guys. It's nice to meet you.
Good luck with this. You can head all day. That way if you want, you may need to. Get a lot of motions.
There we go. You're good now.
Thank y'all. He is. The next guy is in there.
I think that's the one. All right.
Oh, okay. Hello? Hey, how are you?
I'm good. Where are you always serving?
Right here.
Oh, okay.
Hey, I'm Jessica. Nice to see you.
Hey, my girl's good. I'm good. See ya. See you, Trey. Tim Davis.
Tim, another couple times. Yep.
We are good. Have a seat.
Power around. Look at mine. Wow, that's okay. All right. Just want to go ahead and give a speech.
Okay. So, thank you so much for being willing, being willing to come in and serve and possibly serve. Um, we have four questions. They are all pretty much the same thing. So just once you start visiting with us, you'll have a concerted question. So the first one is tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are interested in serving.
Okay. Uh, I'll give you kind of my background just to begin with. I grew up in the area. I'm from, or I went to Belton Schools. Showed livestock through Belton 4H FFA.
Always the best kids. You can have done that with my kids.
Yeah. Yeah. And so.
Went to Bel.
So grew it through doing that. Of course, you, you get a lot of help from the community when you're in it. You get a lot of people that are adding on to your project at the end of the year. If you make the sale, you get all these connections. Temple Iron and Metal bought my project a couple of times. Belton Vet Clinic bought my project a couple of times. So you get this sense of community and you like to give back. And I started from an early age dealing with all of that. So once I got into college, uh, first I wanted to be a vet, uh, and I worked at Belton Vet Clinic for a long time and decided I didn't want to be a vet because those doctors get dead a lot. So, cause I decided against that. And I went, went to Starleton, got an engineering degree and came back to the area and started working for Monty Clark at Clark Associates. And through that, it's been really exciting to do projects in the area. I was talking to Zoe earlier about, uh, Family Promise in Temple. That's one of the projects we worked on. And just giving back and you're giving back in a way that is your job and you're getting paid for it in one sense, but you're also seeing things get built in the community, seeing the community grow. And I, and I would really like that. And so once I started, got my feet under me with project management and stuff and growing projects and doing my work. I've wanted to get back to the community in other ways. And so that's why I joined Leadership Temple, going through that process right now. And, and they highly recommended we apply for these boards. And I was like, yeah, it sounds like a great way to get involved and have some say in the future of the community.
That's wonderful.
Really, it really gives you a good, um, sort of a bird's eye view.
Mm-hmm.
Of what's going on now, all the different projects. Of course, you, you see that as an engineer, you see a lot of it anyway. Right? You know, one thing linked into another. So. Right, you know, one thing linked into another, so, yeah, that's pretty good.
Mon- Monty and Cynthia are sure, they're nice folks and they really give back in a big way, so. Um, I'm not surprised if they see that in you and, you know, and are willing to allow you that time to do that, that's really nice.
They're great, they're great influences, they're great people to have around, my kids and anybody that is around, they're just. The best people, and so it, it helps to work with great people.
So it says D S A B and Z B A, sounds like an easy fit for you?
That's, that's what everybody, I talked to Mike about it a couple of months ago and I talked to Monty about it and it's like, these are both boards I've worked on and they kind of fit with. Uh, the way you see the world, uh, and so you kind of have a unique experience coming into it.
Is there anything else that was of interest to you when you looked through the list? Or, or as Tim said with the last ones, or anything you don't think, like there's animal services, sounds like you're off that now. Okay, so we'll say animal services, no.
But I'm really open to.
I haven't dealt with neighborhood revitalization.
It's really great.
Is that something that might fit with engineering type?
Uh, it, it's more, it's more planning, more, yeah. But it, you know, just growing up around here, it's interesting to be a part of different neighborhoods and, um. See what, what the plan is.
He does design.
Yeah, that might be.
And he does design marriages.
Yeah.
Well, there's also, there's a bunch of vacancies on parks.
Yeah.
Has Monty make you a flight walker? Would, you might be interested in Parks Board?
Yeah, Parks would be, that'd be great.
Parks is always a good one, and I think you get a good, you know, lay of the land.
I enjoy Parks, um, yeah, there's just, there's a lot going on, very active board.
Uh, it, would there be any, the only thing I worry about it, I don't, I don't want any conflict of interest or anything with. With what we do, cause I know we've done some parks projects before, but I think they were like add-ons to the parks maintenance building.
Parks were rarely, I mean, you'd be with occasionally, you'd probably abstain less than I do counsel.
That's all you, that's all you do, just not go on that.
Okay.
It's a, it's a five agenda meeting, a five item on the agenda meeting, you just don't go on that one.
Okay.
Yeah, not a big deal.
Okay.
But it's a fairly sizable board too, so.
Yeah.
Can herself?
Yeah.
It's not really gonna have a problem with these, um, uh, two of them staying once a year.
Okay. And parks. Are, are there any times that just, um, in your schedule that just wouldn't work? Cause most of the meetings are during the May, not all of them.
Parks, Parks is lunch, but.
Yeah, they feed you at Park.
No, there's no, I don't have any times that are blocked out right now or anything like that. I have kids that have to run and take care of, after work sometimes it's a little hairy, but I can normally make that work. Uh, they're four and seven right now.
Okay.
Oh yeah, battling soccer, softball, all of it.
Okay, when does Z B A meet in the year? It's like in the daytime sometimes.
It's usually around two in the afternoon. On any certain day or just like.
Any questions for us?
I don't think so.
Alright, well, as always, we appreciate your willingness to serve as volunteers ourselves, we, you know, um, you know how important these boards are and, um. And getting to wrap people on the rap board is very important.
And I appreciate everything y'all do for the city, so.
Yeah, absolutely, it's sure nice to see you. Thank you. Um, I think you can go out that door. He's got a motion thing, so Tim's gonna have to dance, there it is.
Where you go, sir.
We'd hope for, we were trying to find something for Hope to do. And so we took her.
Did y'all, I just want to keep notes, did y'all decide on anything for Kayla, like a specific?
No, we'll kind of rest problems.
Um, BJ, with P and B, do you think he would have any issues?
I think he, I, I talked to him about it. Think he would abstain like.
Yeah, he's just, uh, he's super involved.
I'd say twenty percent of the stuff he's due there is probably there's stamps on. And we talked to him about it, but I, I already did talk about it.
Okay.
The thing about that though is he would, I mean, he would know it really, really well. So I'm thinking, he would know that stuff and kind of realistically how it works.
So we took, um, I don't know. When we tried to find something for Hope to do, so we took her to soccer practice. One first time and definitely like the coach was super.
How are you?
I'm good.
Yep, good to see you, always.
Yeah, we know you.
A big week coming up here soon. Kind of overwhelmed and you put a lot, you really grow.
I was double checking the date today and that flyer has the right date, it also says May twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth on there.
It's in our flyer, what is it?
Yeah, cause we already discussed that and oh, there it is, yeah.
Yeah, that's what you know will do.
No, but we're, we're ready, we're, we're excited, so it's gonna be a good year.
We are too, we got matching shirts and.
Good to go.
As the weather holds up, we'll be good.
Yeah, Mike with his matching shirt last time was like, no, sir, we're getting in this year.
I've done that a couple of times, he walked out of there and just.
Oh my gosh, I know.
Yeah, yeah.
It's all good, but.
Are you, are you gonna be a teacher?
Alright, let's just dive right in, um, so, uh, first off, we appreciate your willingness to, to serve, have you served before?
Not on this board, but I'm, I'm currently on the Z B A and then I've been on the D S A B.
Okay, okay, and are you terminated out of those?
I think, uh, yes, I'm on the last term, I think for D S A B, but I just started on Z B A. Haven't been on Z B A.
Yeah, oh, okay, alright. Okay, well, good, so we, um, we typically ask four questions, um, but we don't. We normally, as you tell Kelly, as, as you answer the first one, you answer the rest. So, uh, tell us a little bit about yourself, why you're interested in serving, what do you think you bring to the, to the table, so to speak, um, what do you want to accomplish? Et cetera, alright, so, um.
BJ will work for Charlie Associates, we're a civil engineering firm here in Temple.
Tony, you been with him?
Uh, twenty years this year.
Wow.
I know, yeah, twenty years, uh, started off, it's interesting, started off as a draft, I went to college on my associate's degree. In drafting and then I have just kind of moved my way up and worked several different hats, like most people do in small businesses and. Uh, current title of the Vice President of Operations, um, Victor and Lexi are still there. Probably will be leaving soon and we'll probably take on a new role at that point, but, um. So twenty years in the development world, I've, I've done lots of surveying and project management, uh, not an engineer, so I don't stand for sign anything, but. Um, I help with a lot of design, I represent several developers in town. Um, I'm currently in the process of trying to get my, uh, R P L S, my license for a shirt professional land surveyor license, so. Um, I've done everything I need to do, which is years of work, I'm just at the point to go take tests, so hopefully. I pass that soon and I'll be registered and we'll be done with school, so. Um, so, uh, yeah, so really it's, you know, I, I've, I've come in here before and sat down with y'all when I got on the D S A B. I think that was actually during COVID when those were done and, uh. Then for the Z B A recently and, and my answer is typically always the same thing for why I'm wanting to serve is, you know, I've. Participated so long in helping build the community from a development side, I wanted now step forward and. And help out from a board position and I've gotten involved outside of Temple, um, along Tabula. And I'm a board member on a T board right now, um, on a bunch of committees, obviously we break the party if you cook off and donate funds from that, so. The, the longer I've been at Charlie's and older I'm getting, I think that I've recognized that I want to be able to give back and. Uh, help out and, and, you know, give what I know, and so this board being, really it's a. P and Z I'd love to be on, but I know that I would have to remove myself so often, that just doesn't make sense.
How often do you say, I mean, you go to most of the.
Well, here lately, I've not been, I've not been on a lot, we have not had a lot of stuff on there recently. Um, but when things are going, it's like, um, at least once a month going.
You'd be the, you'd be really, really good at it, I just.
I know.
We talked about it, your obsession. You'd be the most educated P and Z member to come on.
I would, I would love to serve on it, but I, I realized that if I had something on there. I was that last vote that I had to remove myself from it, it's, my client would probably be pretty upset then, so. So that, other than that board, I feel like the P and Z and the R Z are the two, uh, boards that make one of the biggest impacts on Temple. Um, and I've seen so many projects go forward, um, through the city that went through the R Z that. It's like, man, if I wanna, if I wanna be a part of something, they, R Z is the biggest board, I think that I could be on, so, um, and then. What I think I contribute would be, would obviously be the development, you know, being involved in so much in Temple already on a development side. I think that, um, being able to look at things, knowing the engineering aspects and the, the cost. For those things and then really also the survey, and I know there's a lot of right away that's required for these projects and having a survey experience, I think, uh. Would, I would be able to bring that to the board and give some insight towards that, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there ever a problem getting a quorum at, uh, P and Z?
Not now, we went through a brief theory, how about six months ago, where. There were people's final terms and so they kind of weren't coming to the last meetings, but it's been a while.
Is your preference be day to stay on any, um. Uh, construction related or community development, perfect, like, at, at your professional level? Because we have other boards, we have, you know, airport, we have animal services, we have parks. We have lots of other stuff.
Yeah.
Emergency, emergency services, which is fire, uh, citizens police advisory, which is police, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I really wouldn't mind helping out any, you know, not pick. I'm gonna apply specifically for P and Z and R Z, so those are the ones that I would prefer.
Yeah.
I think that's where I could have the most impact, but, um, no, I mean, if, if there were other boards that. You know, needed someone there, and I felt that I'd be a better fit, then I wouldn't have a problem with it.
Okay.
The S A B and the, the emergency services and the police, policemen are fun. I'm the L A S on their phones, yeah, see things.
So he's just getting off the F A B and is there, um, Jenna, is there a deal where you, um, have to set out a certain amount of time before you can? Or the same board? Okay, uh, you have to set out one full term, but you can go on a different, and your term actually doesn't expire on the S A B until twenty-twenty-seven. You're in your final term.
Okay. You still serve on two boards.
So he is the, the B A and the S A B.
D B A is awful, right?
Is that correct?
Yeah, I have me now.
Okay.
We could. If we put him on another board, we could find another alternative.
Yeah.
D B A.
Okay.
Have such experience, person as well. You know. Maybe the most qualified. We'll get to you later. Okay. Counsel, anything for, anything else for BJ? BJ, anything for us?
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, we appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
Alright.
Hey, how was the record?
Oh, it was great.
You had a good time?
We really had a great time.
I've not done that yet, but I, I need to get out there.
I would advise it, it's the one over by Burke Creek, or not Burke Creek, yeah, yeah, Burke Creek Burger.
Yeah.
Where you go in and break, they have bottles.
Old American cream.
Yeah, yeah, I see it, we go to Burke Creek and I see it, Laura wants to go there, we've never went in.
I usually save all my wine bottles and bring them over there. Right, I'm doing a service.
Thank y'all very much. Get in front of it, there we go, there you go. I see later on Will Sisco's interviewing also. James Bones. It's a bold level. Did you find out about that first lady?
She's a district four. Just amazing, you know.
Tim Davis.
Tim Bowles.
You're here, thank you.
Hi Jim, Jessica Walker.
Mike Okington. Nice to meet you.
Oh, okay.
Might want to introduce on this one.
Well, first of all, thanks for coming in and thanks for your interest in, in, uh, serving. We always appreciate people who want to help on our community.
Yeah.
Um, we have a list of questions that we're supposed to go through, but we usually don't get past about the first one and you've usually kind of answered. Answered the rest of it most of the time, as a general rule. The first one's, uh, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving.
So, I'm, uh, I'm an old guy, so I'm not gonna start very beginning. Retired, retired army, served all my twenty-eight plus years, uh, as an officer, a co-officer. Who had specialty, uh, PhD in toxicology, so. I, I understand, uh, the science, I understand a lot of the things that have to do, uh, with, um, animals in our communities. Uh, I've, I've had to be, uh, a bad guy in some instances and I've, uh, had to make some choices. You know, at, at that level, uh, none of them were earth shattering or anything.
What's that mean?
Getting someone off post for not treating their animals right, you know, self-hat shit, yeah, unfortunately. Um, so in the scientific, uh, area, you know, had, uh. I was commander of a unit overseas, uh, researching and, um, had, uh, had to send a guy home because of, um. A number of reasons, and so, yeah, I've, I've been the bad guy, but then, you know, a lot of the, uh, people who treat their, their animals. In a kind and friendly way, and to be quite honest with you, I don't know how much this, um, position you're looking for someone to fill is. You know, giving their input or actually doing research, um, I think the latter is probably what I'm pretty good at as far as. Uh, comparing, you know, the way that someone treated an animal with what the laws and rules are and all that sort of stuff, so. That was the long story, the short story is, I'm compelled to, you know, engage some of my experience and. I feel kinda, you know, in the military, we retire relatively early and so. I, I feel as though I've got some things that could probably be utilized by the community and it's, that's not just. You know, me patting myself on the back, it's me wanting to actually exercise weight.
Yeah, sure, do you have pets at home?
Oh, sore subject. Yeah, until, uh, we go, sorry, we had to put him down, yeah, it was, it was, it was kind of like. This, this morning I couldn't, um, couldn't pick up the paper because since he was eight weeks old, he was picking up the paper on the curb and bringing it to me. So the paper sat there for a while, but why fix it up, but I'm, I'm, you know, I'm a big boy, I, I understand that. Put a lot of animal down and, uh, it's unfortunate, but it was, uh, best for him.
Have you seen our new facility?
I've heard of it, I know that there is one.
Yes, we're very proud of it.
Good.
Need to swing by in Temple.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, um, that's kind of me in a nutshell, uh. Raised an air force brat, um, moved all of my life, been in the military basically all of my life. Um, but we've been here in Temple for eight years, this is home.
Wonderful, we're glad to have you, District Three, where do you live?
Uh, it's on Berkeley Drive, it's over, um. People ask me this, it's kind of hard to explain, cause it's even harder to tell you how to get to my house, cause it's so convoluted. Uh, but it's, it's over, well, by the Methodist Church over there on Thirty First Street.
Gotcha.
It's in that neighborhood.
I know exactly where you are.
Yeah.
A lot going on out there. A lot going on out there off thirty-first, right?
Yeah, and what, what we notice as far as how it's affected us, uh, we see more deer, we see more. More armadillos, uh, fox, just because of all the, you know, disturb in there.
Goodness.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Have you, um, I mean, with your, you, 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 I'm trying to keep taking those step back. You have very interesting background whenever it comes, when it comes to animals. I don't know that we've seen that before. Um, are you involved with any local groups or anything currently in the area?
No, because really it's been, uh, two years, I think, you know, time really. Flips by, when I said we were here eight years, it's like, oh. Um, but I was practicing with Banfield, so I actually had a, uh, a job after my retirement.
Okay.
Uh, but I did it for like something, six years, something like that, and I realized it was. Time for me to take it by.
What's Banfield?
So Banfield's a pet hospital, it's actually the largest veterinary hospital in the world, it's just, it's like the, the Kmart of veterinary clinics.
Is that the one that's in the pet store?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. That's when we started taking our dogs, it's been really good.
Hmm. Okay.
Yep.
Alright. Well, let me ask you this, are you, you, you've put down, okay, there it is, willing to serve on any board, okay. So animal services is your hot button. Um, we have some, we have an unusual number of vacancies on our parks board. This time around, we have four or five vacancies, that's something we'd be interested in.
Yeah.
Sort of, sort of in the animal vein.
Yeah, sure.
Sort of, maybe.
I mean, they're our dog parks.
That's.
Alright, we have deer somewhere, our park staffs.
There, there you go, there you go. Okay, well, very good, do you have any questions for us?
Um, I, I kind of walked into this offering myself up as, you know, someone that would, you know, could hopefully do some good, but I, I, I don't exactly know. Even, even outside of the animal board commission thingy, uh, I don't know what you expect out of. I mean, is it, uh, I suspect you guys are out of the Zoom phase of doing meetings and all that sort of stuff, but. Um, are, are you looking for someone to do, you know, research and come to a meeting with, hey, this is what I found? I mean, I, I have no idea.
You know, I, really, I think, I think something like that would come out of the meetings, right through the discussion with your other board members. And of course, in those meetings will also be city staff. Um, I think that it would, um, through conversation, you could determine whether or not there was something that needed to be researched. And, um, and you'll bring that back to the next meeting.
Who, who's the new liaison, our, our liaison that was to that?
It was Susan.
Yeah.
It was.
We've got a sign. Have you been to meeting yet?
No.
So I don't know, I mean, I know the basic function, but I don't know exactly what the board, how they interact with them.
I didn't pick up that.
Oh, goodness.
I mean, I can pass those out. Okay.
Um, and it looks like they are eleven o'clock. Early, so they only meet four times a year. Second week, eleven AM, so you're a retired guy, eleven AM would work for you, right?
I can move, move my, I, my calendar really easy.
Okay. Good. Good, well, very good, well, we appreciate your interest, I, I'm intrigued with your experience, so. Appreciate your time today.
Okay.
Yeah, it's so nice to meet you. Thank you for coming in.
Uh, I don't mean to pry, but we've got a little time, I know who you are, I know who you, I've seen, because you all have been in the paper.
Okay.
If you guys have been in the paper, I guess I, I have not known, uh.
Flying under the radar.
So you're, are you?
Yes, so I'm in district one, so that's all of North Temple. And then Mike, well, those district two, Mike, nope, Susan isn't with us, um, she is, has medical leave right now, so she's district three, she would be your council member. But you can contact any of us if you need anything. And then Mike is over in West Temple, so he's district four. And then Tim, it's the all great and powerful laws.
We've that delegate.
Jessica, I got something for you.
Sometimes behind the curtain, right?
That's right.
Sometimes, sometimes.
Well, very good.
Great.
You met, we.
Yeah, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Alright, you guys, take care.
You gotta kind of do a little. Dance in front of this.
Well, it turns green.
There you go, you got it.
So this is the turn screen.
That's it.
Dreamings go.
Thank you.
Thanks much, bet.
Brandon knows all.
I've heard, so I'm, I don't know Brandon very well, um. He seems like such a solid guy. Brothers, high on him.
Yes, yeah.
Hey, how are you?
Hey, Brandon. Brandon, how are you? Good to see you.
Now, we'll go around the table, it's good to see you.
Brandon, how are you?
I'm great.
Happy to meet you.
Back on that.
I know, look it up.
That's good, that's good.
Are we in here?
So you're with Sean Branch now?
I am.
Little different world.
It is a very different.
I thought you were still in.
You seen?
T C.
No, uh, uh, October first, yeah. Yeah, so I'm still.
Sean Branch is David Lee.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, his various.
Oh, it's a very good steal.
Yeah.
I assume it's there, you, you work on all the businesses, probably?
Yep.
Very interesting.
It's good.
Yes, absolutely.
And his wife is the controller, she, she the controller out there?
Uh, no, uh, Janet, uh, doesn't have a role in the business of, I mean, she's.
No, I'm sorry, your wife.
Oh, my wife.
I'm sorry, I didn't finish my sentence.
Okay.
Yes, yes, yeah, she's a, yeah.
That's good. I bet y'all's checkbooks are balanced.
We, I still haven't done my taxes yet, so.
For the city gate.
Yeah.
Well, good, well, listen, we appreciate it, um, thank you for your willingness to serve, um. I think all of us have probably received a phone call, said, hey, you know, Brandon put in an application, need to find somewhere for him, so. That's good, so we, we, um, have four questions, but really, as you kind of tell us your story and why you're wanting to serve, you, um, you answer all of them. So, uh, you know, in a nutshell, tell us a little bit about yourself and what your interest is in, in serving. Uh, what would you like to accomplish, what skills or talents would you bring to the board, et cetera?
Awesome, uh, well, I'll start with kind of my background, I came to, or graduate, when I graduated college, I went to work for K P and G in Downliston. Uh, big for accounting, thought, uh, someday I'd get closer to here, maybe I'd transfer to the Austin office, um, someday. Or, or something like that, and then I was home over Christmas in, I guess, twenty thirteen, and. Uh, my mom was like, well, you know, Sam Lussey emailed me a couple of times and they really need somebody as finance director. Um, and it was funny because she actually sent me the, I like to tell the story, the email chain, uh, between them, it was like him asking if she was interested. Her saying, no, but I have a son, um, maybe he'd do it, and then like six months later, Sam responds like, okay, fine.
Yeah.
So I was like, oh, I get to distract all the rest of you, as we got to this point. Um, but yeah, through an application, didn't, I, I get it, but I, uh, had that opportunity and so I asked my. Then girlfriend, uh, now wife, if, if.
In mother of.
Felt in fortune.
Born now?
Yep. Uh, she. Yeah, and she was like, yeah, okay, um, so, uh, we did, and that was my intro into municipal government, uh, and that was awesome. I love working at, I'm still involved at the City of Belton, um, and on our, our B E C over there, so I, um. Care about it, love that, got the, the chance to jump to Temple College and be the CFO there, so not for any dissatisfaction about them, but just a new.
Sure.
Uh, opportunity to learn, a little broader scope as far as the, that role and whatever, still with H R and I T and other stuff, and so. Uh, I made, uh, that transition in, uh, twenty nineteen, and then, uh, suddenly got the. Uh, chance to go work for, for David, uh, starting in October, and so I told myself, when I left, recall the conversation with David. He was like, why are you leaving? He was on the city council at that time. And I said, well, my goal, uh, long-term is to be a, a private sector CFO, and I think this is the next move, uh, into, to getting to do that, and so. Uh, I did that and it's wonderful, I still, uh, work with the college on a few projects that, that we're wrapping up as they're transitioning to. A new CFO, so still care deeply about, uh, the college and, and their continued success, and so. Uh, I, I tell people, I've never had a job I didn't love, except for being a counselor at the V C Y C. So I figured out pretty early on in life that childcare was not going to be.
But I'm gonna have more kids.
My success story, yeah.
But, but whether you're own.
Yeah, it's totally different.
So that was, um, that was there, and so I've been blessed, uh, so some of the. Uh, relevant strengths I have, I'm extremely familiar with, um, municipal finance and government finance. Uh, the economy of, of Temple, just through working at, uh, Temple College and the substantial impact that the reinvestment zone has had on. Uh, growing that economy and creating the, the opportunities that we have here, uh, locally and incredibly blessed, uh, with that, actually. Uh, got to work with, uh, Tracy in the appraisal district back in, I think it was twenty eighteen-ish, when, uh, when the. Shift, curse, reinvestment zone, what we like to call it here, um, uh, was kind of playing havoc on, on the tax rate calculations. I'm very familiar with how, how it works on, on that side and.
You figured it out.
We did, and we had good, good partners at, uh, um, I say it always wrong, McCrory bragged with the, the attorneys for the appraisal district worked with us and we got that. Uh, result.
The way I've heard of it is that he came in.
Brandon down.
Yes, put on his cape, flew to the rescue, so.
Was a team vet.
Yeah.
Where man's will go.
I spoke about every hero.
Well, we had to, that was, that was fun, so we had to get that done, you know, um. Working at the college, the beneficiaries, uh, at least tangentially have all the improvements that were done, uh, as part of T Med and, and then the reinvestment zone played. Uh, a big part, uh, at least in the financing and funding of those improvements there and that, and then T Med district, so. Um. Um, maybe with the zone, if I have friends or professional acquaintances that have. I guess clued me in, I'll, you know, everybody finds out on the back end, like, oh, yeah, that was, we made that project happen, and so, uh. Really excited for the opportunity to, to help contribute, uh, to that and to that. Vision and, and continued growth of, of Temple, because that's what's gonna. Keep us all moving forward and create that economic opportunity so that someday I can guilt my kids over Christmas.
You're still in the county, Brandon?
I'm actually in Morgan's Point, uh, is, is our address, so we're. Uh, if I, if I had a better arm, I could throw a rock and hit Temple, but, um, I'm right, right down the street, so, yeah. Uh, all part of the neighborhood is just outside.
So the zone meets on the fourth week, uh, Wednesday, seven AM.
Okay.
It's an early bird meeting for sure. Um, but it's, and it's usually fairly lengthy. Um, usually, what do you think, Tim, two, two hours? Like that?
Yeah, two hours. If you're out by eight, that's a short meeting, nine's pretty typical, I mean, two hours.
Yeah, means some big personalities didn't show, so.
So it says here, uh, Brandon, that RZ is your, um, your number one option, but you're willing to serve on, anything?
I.
Most anything?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just don't meet the, the residency requirement, so there's some boards that, um.
County, going professional.
Yeah, uh, and, and so that's, uh, but yeah, when, when I want to serve, uh, thankfully, I think there's a residency requirement on P and Z, so I won't speak to not on. To their P and Z, I, I respect and appreciate the people who are willing to, to do those, but, uh, it's challenging, that's a challenging board to be on.
They are. That's a busy board, they learn a lot, very important, I mean, I, I would say it's probably. RZ and P and Z is probably.
Yeah.
Neck and neck as to the influence they have on the community. So, anything for us?
Did I, did I answer all the questions?
I think so, yeah, do you have any questions for us?
No, I mean, I can put, I, I mentioned earlier, I'm on the, I'm actually currently the president of, uh, the Belton Economic Development Corporation, I don't. Uh, personally see that as a conflict, but I would, I mean, that, that's pretty hard to decide, I can, uh, I can appreciate if there is, I think that. Um, holistically, we're trying to grow the pie for the whole area and I know. The, the relationship between Adrian and Cynthia, they don't. Uh, we're not stealing each other's businesses and we tend to not compete, uh, externally, so I think that, in my mind, I'll attempt that with. Great, some sort of issue is to, if the same company is anonymously speaking.
Right.
To both of them, and, and I just, and we're just not aware of that, but otherwise, um, I see that, that the economic success of. What the cities are quite tied.
I know, we've talked about that a lot, um, obviously with, on the, at the Temple E D C level, just about that. Um, you know, the impact that it has on the, just the general region, and so I will see that as a lot different, Belton E D C.
How long do you have left on that?
Um, I think I was just reappointed to a, to your term last November, so I've got another year, so on that, and so we've got some cool. Um, projects going, made the newspaper, we bought some property on the, the edges of the city. Um, no set prospects right now, just more to, to kind of grow the city limit, since you can't do that.
I'm hoping I can zoom about my, to my office actually get out there.
Yeah, that, we've got, um, projects going, so, so there's some infrastructure stuff, but, um, on that, and we're still focused. You know, we've got our Imagine Belton Plan, which is, uh, modeled heavily on some of the work that y'all did for, for your downtown plans.
Yeah.
And we just try to, uh, do that, so we've got those kind of things moving forward, and I think that's, like you said, it. Temple, I mean, touch all the different school, or multiple different school districts, uh, there's, there's a really big, uh, umbrella of the. Economy of Temple and, I believe, and development and all the other communities, I think for all. Fighting the same fight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very good. Anything else for Brandon?
I think so, thank you so much.
Thank y'all, I appreciate the time.
Good to see you. See you later. Bye.
He's a really like a, a cracked beer aficionado.
Really?
I think he make beer instead of Roger.
Fuck to, uh, do.
Yeah. Like he's super into it.
So do they have somebody accountable on RZ right now? They do, they've got Gary Schmidt and Tyler Johnson. Um, Gary was the past finance chair, Tyler's current. And, um, but I think Gary, although he is a representative for toy I S D. So, um, I know he stepped back and some of his financial. Responsibilities with that. Yeah.
He's a board member, he's not the finance chairman.
Tyler's taken that over, and Tyler was sat there before, so it's an easy part, an easy, you know, thing for him to step into, if that, if he would ever have. He's a good, he's a good understanding of finances and someone who actually understands the intricacies of the reinvestment zone, like. Like Brandon does.
Yeah, he may be more, he may have a better understanding of the intricacies. Than Tyler, I mean, Tyler understands the numbers.
Yeah, although Tyler's.
Oh, no, 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 no doubt, absolutely.
We'll just say he knows more than me.
But he did, there was a, um, I'm sure Bob told y'all, there was, I don't even end up understanding the specifics and. The valuations and it ended up actually impacting Temple's working tax rate. Um, to the city's debt, I mean, our, our tax rate could be. Cause you know, you get into the adopted and then no, no new revenue, all that, tax rate, actually. We are short on the tax rate for.
Yeah, we actually approved a rate that was, I think, didn't we, that was lower than we could.
Without, yeah, it was super complicated, but still. We did.
He's the one that.
Okay.
Solved the puzzle.
Who is this? Rick?
Hey, come on in, how are you?
I'm good.
Very good, very good. Sit at the head of the table there, you're in charge, right?
Yep, happy. Good, I'm Jessica Walker.
You're, you're my city?
Yes, I am, I am.
Hey, Mike. Good to see you.
So. Sure, would you like a water while I'm up?
Uh, no, I think I'm okay.
Anybody?
I'm good too. Where do you live, in district one?
I live in Western Hills.
Okay.
Uh, right across from you.
Yeah.
So, I pass Drayton's house all the time.
I know, it's everybody's, yeah. So, yeah, I, so thank you, thank you for being willing to come today, we certainly appreciate that, we have. Four, uh, questions, and in answering question one, you end up answering all four questions, so. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving.
Oh, so. Oh, so I have a, I have a passion for helping others. I mean.
Yeah, we see it, we see it.
Yeah, well, Mike, you know, uh Shannon and all that, but I have a passion for helping others and but I like to do it efficiently. And it's been my understanding that planning and zoning is probably the most influential, maybe even end up for debate powerful commission a city has. Um I want to do it effectively. If I want to dedicate my time to something, let's do it in the most efficient who all is going to benefit the entire city. The decisions made in planning and zoning ripple effects, so um they need to be considered.
Yeah. And it's quasi judicial, so you actually are voting on things that um that carry a lot of weight.
Yeah, I mean, I came from a city that uh was notorious who, that doesn't have zoning uh regulations and stuff, yeah. I think I mentioned in my, I was, I was a little risky on my, my application. Uh but it's the truth. So towards the end, I've I've been here twelve years, thirteen years now, and I love it. I've I've visited Temple my entire life. My grandmother lived here and all that, but uh there was a time just before I moved up here where H I S D had a sports complex and then later their admin building is now there. Uh and right across, Steak and Ale went out of business and a strip club came in, yeah. And it's there right now. You can go off two ninety, exit Tacoma, and there it is. And it's, it was the top of town. And so it's like, it's important that you need to put in some thought of what you're uh developing. And it's got to be planned. Anyway, I'm just rambling and nervous.
No, I I like that you're very meticulous.
That's a very interesting perspective.
Yeah, you don't want that. Yeah. There was another case, uh our neighborhood in Houston. There was a distribution center, I don't know the business, what the, what they did, but it was definitely a distribution center. And they expanded it and they thought, these eighteen wheelers thought they could just come through our neighborhood with uh a little thoroughfare. There was an accident, flipped over in somebody's yard. I mean, eighteen wheeler, full blown.
In your yard.
Yeah, oh yeah. So you can't, you can't, you've got to be thoughtful.
Right, absolutely. So my cousin Susan Bolton was around McDonald's forever.
Yep.
Um so that's always kind of
Hell yeah.
near and dear to our family's heart.
We named the conference room after, that wasn't, it certainly was not enough for for her legacy, you know, so. Um but anytime Shannon has a IT issue, Susan was notoriously not great with with technology.
When you said that, I was like, you're calling.
So 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 every time Shannon has a a technology issue in her office, it's like oh, hey, Suz, I mean Shannon, uh I'm sure you don't, I think some voodoo's still going on, yeah, so. But it's a little running joke, so, but um yes, yeah.
So you have down uh planning and zoning and ZBA. Is there anything else that interests you? Did you get a chance to really dive in or is that?
I did. And and those were the two that
Kind of stood out.
Yes, it really stood out. There, I felt, I mean, everything's important, yes.
Yeah.
But those are top priority. Um in February, I met with uh Dr. Ah. And I know that planning and zoning has got to be really mindful of development in the South and Southwest. I mean, looking at, I think in the next five years, having to expand Sampson Tower uh that was just completed, so I mean
Yeah, because Rodger is not.
And we talked on the Tech Dot uh expansion or the uh I fourteen. So there's um anything, you know, if Tech Dot and everything goes to plan, which I mean but still, we're gonna have to reassess everything along I thirty-five, Bird Creek neighborhood and all of that, so. I mean, we've got some.
Got some big things happening
Yeah.
for sure. Do you have any questions, Brad?
I, you know, I do. Um and it's, it's just in y'all's experience and 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 what what's come down the pipe with but this is just curiosity, like what was? Okay.
No, if you get this blank stare, you know.
No, 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 I shouldn't be saying that, no. But Mike, I've just been curious, what in planning and zoning? What do, what's been, I guess, the most contentious, like thing that's, the plan that's come down the line where?
Barbie parks.
I was wondering, because I've noticed, yeah, yeah.
Has it been tricky? Yeah, we've had a number of them just kind of pop up. Um what else has been, I would say apartments being built next to a, if it has large lot.
Yeah, that's probably that's probably the biggest one over the years.
Letting, you know, when when that, or maybe a higher vintage use, like apartment complex or duplexes, but standard neighborhood.
Yeah.
You know, like, and um you know, what was kind of a joke with the councilman, you know, that whenever I bought my house, a realtor promised me, nobody would ever buy that thirty acres sitting out there right on the
Right on the
The zone dag is always gonna be cows.
I I remember, you know, coming to visit me, Ma, and uh when they put the over, the new overpass where Cracker Barrel going over thirty-five, I was like, oh wow, Temple's real, come on, I look. And then put my first comment at twelve years old, I think that's when it, when it was built. I was like, why didn't they do flyovers beating onto uh thirty-five? And so it's like
Everybody wanted.
Get it later.
Uh yeah, yeah.
You're ahead of your time.
Well, coming from Houston, I mean, they, shoot, they spent fourteen years building I I ten um from the uh, from the loop on out to uh the Beltway, so. And it fixed traffic for six years, so now it's
Like I thirty-five.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no kidding, but uh, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, that's kind of the the most difficult for people to wrap their brain around is realizing that next to a busy street, you don't want to have single bed
you know. And that they believe a realtor that
Yeah, yeah. I know.
You know, there are things outside of
And if you really wanted it, you should have bought it. I mean, so you can control it, but
Yeah.
I I remember first moving out here and uh from Western Hills to Temple Lake Park. Uh nothing, no Walmart, no, none of that stuff. You could get to the lake oh in less than ten minutes.
Yeah.
Now, and then uh now we've got, there's a road in Houston, um it's nineteen sixty and it's
Giant Loop.
Yeah, and but there's a particular part, um two ninety in nineteen sixty going northward. And that's what um uh West Adams is starting to look like now. Uh it's like stoplights now. I told you at that Tech Dot meeting. You guys have low hanging fruit on political points to get the lights synchronized.
Oh, that's me.
And then you get your communications department to just like do a, do a spread and give yourselves a pat of the bag. And then they'll stop talking about that five, five million dollars.
Yeah.
So too much?
Never.
I reported a couple of lights just the other day out there.
I am liking the blue, the blue lights at night, though. Those are less intense.
Yeah, I think so too. They're slowly getting changed out.
I, we have a volunteer at at Romney Donals who, Gary and Shannon's friend. And uh, oh no, that's a, that was a wiring thing, a problem. They're, they're gonna get that. I'm like, no, I'm pretty sure that was intentional. Like, those are really nice, like, yeah, so. Um thank you, yeah, rambling.
No, thank you so much for coming in, giving you your time and it really means so much to us because we're all volunteers and we think we're crazy, so it's good to hear you're out there too.
I
What are those are into?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm nervous because uh this is super important. This is, this is city government. This is how people uh get involved in in the decisions, the everyday decision. I have no interest in being on city council and doing what y'all do. I have no interest in being mayor. No, no.
Yeah.
I know, y'all, y'all are a special breed of people.
Born to the training ground, brother.
Yeah.
If you want, if you want to be on B and Z, that's the most contentious.
Yeah.
But No, I imagine.
Things that we have generally is thing brother.
Yeah, I get it, so.
So we have um, I don't know, we have a number, what we have is one spot on P and Z. One spot.
That's actually completely vacant right now.
Maybe have a number of Welcome to D B A. D B A's D B A is um you know, Z B A is um
The Z B A ones are supposed to be electrician, plumber, construction experience.
Yeah.
I think that's what I applied, but then I realized afterwards.
That's all right.
Oh, wait a minute.
But if we don't have them.
I don't think my home remodel, doing it myself.
I don't know.
Couple of these spots have been vacant for a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get it.
So there, did you, did you look through the other um boards? I mean, you you put here that you're willing to serve on any board. Is there anything that sticks out that you just, whenever you read through your life, uh to add to your know-handy?
Uh put me on stop with the
The reason why I ask is we have a number of
Probably like parks or the animal service.
Okay.
I'm more of a people-centered person, so. Love animals. I have a dog.
Oh, no, no, I
Down from the shelter, he's a pain. Shannon talked me into
Oh, yeah.
She do the videos.
That's right, she do the videos and stuff. Yeah, so, yeah, she I can't remember what his, his name was then. I renamed him to Otis, so. Well, I, it was two reasons, uh the drunk from Mayberry.
There you go.
And Otis.
My best, my best friend's dog was Otis Campbell because his, when his wife brought him home, she's a little twelve, she's sitting down and he looked at him and fell over. He said, we can keep him if he's named Otis Campbell.
Okay.
My mom always says that um at her funeral, I have to hire whalers because she doesn't think anybody would cry. And I, and we have to play sitting by the doctor there.
There is a name for for people.
Professional whalers, yeah.
Uh we think that one of our employees might be one of them because she goes to so many funerals. Maybe she's got a side issue.
That's your silver brand must.
Yeah, um yeah, I, I get it. Uh but I I do think, I know you've got, you've got one position open, you got other people to consider, but uh I hope that you really, you know, take me seriously because uh I am I, you know, I'm an average citizen, but I'm not like the one that's uh crazy, that fills up your inboxes about the craziest thing that you know, recycling didn't pick up.
Right, right. No, it's the average citizen that you want. You know, we just need someone level-headed.
Yeah.
That can read the packet and make a decision.
I am your guy for that. Um I think I'm, I've I've got, you know, the base base understanding of how city works and some more. Um so uh I think I'm I I check off a lot of things. And also I I reduce the uh the average median age of, you know.
Yeah.
I I am, yeah. But uh so I I hope you do consider me for that.
Absolutely.
Well. Because I'm, I'm serious about it. I'm, I understand, it's coming from Houston. I've already gone through it. I see what uh not having proper thought and regulations and in consideration.
You have a very good understanding of it for somebody that hasn't.
I saw that, yeah, well, I s- I s- and I approve of all of the, I I know what's coming up on the meeting today and and I approve of, you know, I would be a vote for yes on the consideration I have.
Yeah.
But and there's a, you mentioned RV park, like I think it's off Highway fifty-three. It was a bit odd to put a RV park, you know, like plan our, so y'all postponed it, city council did, so I I'm like, I get that. It's an odd place.
Throwing segment of homeownership in Texas.
What, oh, really?
Yeah. That's one. Okay, there's a house down the street from me that is for sale for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that pre-COVID, it was one sixty. Those just, people are just being pressed out.
I get that, yeah. I mean, in um also, you know, in the east side, you know, your district, you know, you've got a balancing act uh of uh okay, you've got updating to do and you've got some issues of how do you bring business in, you know, to the east side and revitalize it, but you don't want to gentrify the area. Houston, uh it's oldest neighborhood. I I I didn't grow up in the Heights, but I was down the street from there. And I got to witness um the revitalization of of the Heights. Now, can I say uh that uh families who have lived there for decades and decades that I'm, I'm pretty sure that did happen. It's unfortunate and you don't want that happening, but at the same time, you want to revitalize it and bring business to it, so it's, it's a, it's tricky. And I don't, I I don't, I don't envy any of y'all's positions. But I want to help. I want to be a solution.
Thank you so much. Yeah, we absolutely will.
Sure, y'all, that other folks.
We do have a couple more today.
We do.
Yeah.
Very good.
Cool.
Thank you.
Hey, thank y'all for the opportunity.
Oh, there's the I shouldn't answer to it.
All right, thanks.
Bye, see you later.
We only have a few minutes here, the next forty-five.
Yes.
Can I have a body break?
Might lost a magnet.
Oh, it's new.
That's where, that's where I'm at right now too. So I, I wanna be a part of what everybody's doing and contribute in any way that I can. So I, I don't know if that specifically answered your question, but that's.
Yes, so um P and Z is of course in the evening, but um. No, Parks, Parks is on um Tuesdays, those week two of Tuesdays at twelve o'clock. Is that gonna be a problem? For you?
No ma'am.
No, I was telling them a little bit about you um before we turn the camera on, just you know what a great young man you are, how, how you just wanna dive in the deep end, which you know I really can appreciate because it's, it's deep down there sometimes, but you're, you're willing to do it. Um you, you just, I don't know, you really strike me as someone that um is gonna benefit our city and has um, visions for, for something bigger and better. So we really wanna plug you in somewhere.
Well, thanks for saying that. I hope I can uh, I hope I can produce. And uh make those words true. So thank you, Ms. Jessica. That means a lot.
Connor, are you from this area originally?
No, sir. I grew up in uh Fort Worth. Uh my dad moved us down to Colleen in twenty fourteen. And uh I actually did my senior year at Harker Heights, uh and I've been in this area ever since. My wife and I got married in twenty twenty. And we actually bought a house prior to in twenty nineteen and I've lived in Temple ever since.
Very good.
Do you have any questions for us?
Um, no, not really. I'm sorry, I would've come with some if I knew I was supposed to ask any. Thank you guys for allowing me the opportunity to give an interview. So I appreciate that.
Of course. Thank you.
Well, that's nice and concise. Um, we uh, we appreciate your willingness to serve and um. You know, thank you for, it's not often that we get someone um at your age with a focus and a vision. We appreciate that very much. And we can always, you know, use the, the younger in our, in, in what we do. So we appreciate you.
Yes, sir. Well, wherever y'all need to plug me in, I'm, I'm ready to go. So however I can help you guys, I'm willing to do so.
Where, did, did you decide where you live?
We live in the Garden District.
Okay. Very good. We're neighbors then. Very good. Alright.
Over on fifteenth, so. Thank you, guys.
Thirteenth and King.
You're on thirteenth and King?
Yeah.
I walk by there every day with my wife, so as long as it's not raining or too cold.
Yeah, very good. Alright, well, very good. We appreciate you.
Thank you guys. Y'all have a good day.
Thanks, Connor. Bye. He does remodel and then he has Atlas Roofing, of course, the storm that's come through. He's busy with that. Oh, we give up with. Fascinating.
Okay. And that's, that's one name. Will Sisco's next. Will's the kinda guy that might already be here. Don't feel that sad.
I don't either.
Objects may seem closer than they.
That's not beating my brother on it.
Yeah.
Who reminds me of someone that I, I knew somewhere in my life. It's just interesting when I see him. He's a doppelganger for someone and I can't remember who he is, but um he was, was on the neighborhood revival. Did you ever hear about the mission? Right on. And we really just kicked off right in the beginning. And he was in your very close.
Or on that, I think.
Yeah, kinda part of it too.
They bought them when it happened by Chuck Luke.
Oh, yeah?
Alan Patrick, yeah. How long's he been doing with construction?
Two times or?
Oh. Are you talking about Will? I don't know, Will. I remember when he was new.
What made you say that, Mary? What made you say that? What you just said?
Look.
Oh, you were looking at this?
Well, maybe the rep, I'm looking at it.
They just said I'm tall. He's got that bear at the zoo pose. Remember when I was a kid, we went to the San Antonio Zoo, this bear. Big old fat, just leaned up in the corner like. Chucking the little cookies at the bear and he can just, if he could reach it and got it without a ring, I'd look back up.
A little meme one time, it said um, it said, so whenever, at my age, whenever I get down on the ground. I look around for other stuff to do. I'm not getting back down here for a couple of weeks.
I'm out of myself too, a little practice around the house and I'll get down up in somewhere and I don't have the right tool. I'm trying to make, something, I'm thinking I'm gonna shoot for a hammer. Crawl back out of here.
Exactly. Exactly. Or you send it to your back, your head starts twiddling.
Tommy Fettig, if that, that it was. Met his wife.
Yes, you, well, you know, she's very fond of him, Bert. And then uh Lester's daughter Kennedy is engaged and um she's wanting to get bugged in somewhere as well.
What did you, did she work at TMS, the machine?
I do not know that she does. Um I did notice that it did say District Four. Um. I, I don't know. We spent a lot of time with people now and um, you know, Lester and Tommy and they get out and about and stuff, but. Um and I, does she do leadership temple?
She's been, it's been before I would. Hey, Will.
Hey.
Hello, how are you? You know everybody?
Hi, can I meet you?
Hey, Will.
Hey, good to see you.
Good to see you too. Thank you for coming in.
Mike, how's it going?
You? So, you know.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you. Have a seat. So um, we have a couple of questions to ask you. Um but in talking through them, you really answer all of them. So we'll just have this conversation and um, so tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving.
Well, uh, as, as you all know, I'm uh, I work for Charlie Associates here in Temple. I've been here. Been in Temple for twelve, twelveish years with my wife. She's in medicine, which is what brought us here.
What is her specialty?
Infectious disease. Yeah, she uh finished her um fellowship in ID. Uh in the, in the summer before COVID. Took a few months off uh after fellowship and then, and then started full-time staff and then about three months later. COVID, so. Nobody, nobody even knew what ID was until.
Yeah.
Yeah, until a pandemic.
Now everyone.
Now everybody knows how she made it famous, but um. So uh, yeah, I've been working in development um with Charlie Associates. Uh and so um, that's given me a, you know, I get a lot of interaction with city staff and, and, various boards, commissions, P and Z, et cetera. The Yola Council all the time. Um, so, yeah, I've always been interested in community um and being involved in the, in, the community.
Yeah.
At large, and so.
We always see you guys out and about.
Yeah, I feel like I have um, you know, pretty good, pretty good skill set to try to help out with, you know, things like these various boards.
That's definitely. You have um, let's see, Parks, ESAB, I can't see, let's see, what am I missing? Oh, Building Division. Yep. So it, are those the three that you, when you look through and you're like, yeah, cuz you were on uh Neighborhood Revival Division.
Yes. Yeah, I did, I, I did the, kinda worked with a couple of the specific neighborhoods cuz I live in Historic District. So I was on that one. Um, the.
You're still there across from Susan, right?
Yes. And uh, um, and then I helped out with the, forgetting the name of it now, the one on the south side of town.
Burr Creek?
Uh, the southeast side.
Oh, yeah. Barnhart, yeah.
Um, so yeah, no, that was a, that was, I enjoyed that. Um, so yeah, I, I put those three. Honestly, there's, there's probably other ones that I would be interested in as well and would feel like I'd be productive in. Um, but I think those were the ones that I saw had openings.
Okay.
This time, maybe, so that's why I put those.
Yeah.
Um, but.
Do you and your kids go to the parks, spend a lot of time out there? How old do your kids now?
Uh, six and eight. So um, you know, when they were, especially a, a few years ago, they're kind of aging out of, you know, parks and playgrounds and more, getting into more sports now, you know, but.
Are they doing soccer then, across roads?
Yes, ma'am. Um, but yeah, Whistle Stop, oh my goodness, yeah, we spent a lot of time at Whistle Stop. Um, and Optimist Park, which is in our neighborhood. Spent a lot of time there after it got um, it got fixed up.
I know.
Not that long ago. So absolutely, yeah. We spend a lot of time at the parks.
What's the ESAB interest, just cuz there was an opening or do you have some interest?
Well, you know, we, we do uh, in, just in, in my line of work, I deal a lot with um compliance with fire code, you know? And so I, I kind of, I'm involved with uh, with that side of it. You know, with the fire marshals all the time, very, you know, fire marshals all over the county and central Texas. And so um, you know, I, I, I have, I have experience with it.
I hadn't, I hadn't thought of.
Yeah, you know, fire hydrants, spacings and fire lanes and uh, you know, so I, I don't have intimate knowledge of, of, all of the more emergency services part of it, you know, the public interaction, but I do have a lot of experience with um, with compliance with fire code.
Yeah.
And how the fire code is put together and why it's, you know, why it's the way it is.
Just uh having that understanding of it. Already gets you steps ahead of some other folks that just, they just wanna do something. Yeah. Gonna mean you already have working knowledge of how to go there.
How much did what you do for a living translate into help on the neighborhood services, neighborhood planning districts? Barnhart and Historic District.
So it was interesting because I, I see all of, all of those neighborhood plans. It's impossible for me to not view them through the compliance filter. Cuz so much of what I do has to do with compliance with code. And so um, you know, I think you could probably ask the guys at Covey that, I, I think. They probably, yeah, I, I was driving them crazy during those meetings cuz.
You can't do that.
It's like, well, okay, that is a great idea. So how do we, how do we incorporate that in a manner that is, that it's enforceable um with those neighborhood plans? Uh cuz I strug, I struggled with the neighborhood plans from an enforceability uh standpoint.
My gosh, you gotta have somebody with that understanding.
Yeah. And you know, even staff, right? I mean, Erin, that's not her. That's not her um side of the house, so to speak.
Right, right.
Well, it's like, when you have to deal with the stuff, you know all the loopholes and. Know what needs closed.
Yes, yeah. And so um, so it definitely, from that side of it, I uh, you know, engineers and planners kinda have a long history of butting heads. Uh, um, just in, all over the place, but especially in land development, which is primarily what we do. Um, so it was, yeah, it was, it was a lot of fun and enlightening to kinda see, cuz that was, that was a planner-led, you know.
Right.
Um, project. And so to, to have the guys at Covey, the planners at Covey, and of course, there are a lot of planners, city planners in those meetings as well. Um, it, it, it was, it was a challenge to try to.
To be the voice of reason.
Yeah. To not just say, well, no, you can't do that. Uh, you can't do that. That's like, you know, that's contrary to the code that you already have.
That's what the planners say, but look at this.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was on, when I was on P and Z, we used to go every year to the state planning board meetings and I don't know. It's really informative, but they would, some of those meetings, the guys do in the meetings. Um, they would ask if there were any fire chief, fire marshals in the room because fire marshals wanna do exactly the opposite of the plan.
Yeah. Yeah, and it, you know, so much of uh those neighborhood plans. Uh, are, all of, a lot of it is great and a lot of it, I think, should just be in this, in the standard code. A lot of the things, um, just pick all the best stuff from all those neighborhood plans and just make them part of the normal development code. Um, that is kind of my personal opinion on, on those neighborhood plans.
Right.
Um, so.
How often do you think um, well, no, not with the, that was, I had P and Z in my head. I was thinking you might have to obtain from.
Yeah.
But yeah, you didn't have to.
Yeah.
Be raised in your earlier.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So, yes.
Yeah, that would be a, that would be an issue. I, you know, P and Z would be one of the things that I would thoroughly enjoy. But, you know, maybe in retirement. You know, twenty, thirty years from now, when I don't, when I could not have so many conflicts.
Right. Gotcha. Do you have any questions for us?
I don't think so. I mean, I, I um, yeah, I'm, the, the time commitments of these boards are, are not such that.
They're really not.
It'd be a bother. I mean, I, I, I feel like I'd love to.
Yeah.
Sue somewhere I can and I do think I have, you know.
Let me just noon one month, one day out of the month, you know, for Parks.
Yeah.
I never see you.
Well, that are easy.
And then ESAB and Building Standards just meet as needed, so. How often is that? I mean, just how often last year?
He is.
He meets quarterly at the most. Building Standards meets a couple of times a year. Really depends on how many cases they have.
He put, is this supposed to, this is ESAB though?
Yes.
Did I say?
Can't do it again.
Uh, you, you said ESAB, which he would be actually on. Development Standards Advisory Board. We're out of your alley. We're kinda heavily loaded with engineers right now. BJ's on.
Oh, yeah, BJ's on.
And they don't meet.
Mike's happy about that. He would like them to meet at least.
ESAB's fine, I believe, he's on the least one. You get to go out and climb the tower and. Kind of just stop looking drones. With the fire mouth.
Yeah.
Pretty good insight there too.
Yeah, for sure. Well, thank you. We certainly appreciate you coming in.
Absolutely.
We are always just kind of in awe of people that are willing to give up their time, um, you know, that are just kind of volunteers like us. Volunteer nerds like us.
Yeah.
There's more of us than we think.
Yep. I mean, you know, and I've been here long enough that it's, it's becoming, you know, home.
Yeah.
And so you kinda have that draw. When we came here, I never dreamed we would still be here in twelve years. Um, but, you know, we both found jobs we like and uh, and so, you know, then we started having kids. And now our kids are old enough that we have time to do other stuff, so.
Were you here right af, you came here right after college, did you?
Not, not right after, no. I uh, Lauren was in med school in Little Rock. Uh, so we actually met shortly after college and I, I was at, working at a summer camp actually full-time. I was kinda not quite ready to uh let go of all that.
Yeah.
Summer camp stuff, so I did that for, for a few years after college. And then we got married and I worked for TerraCon. Um, she's a geotechnical company in Little Rock. They're all over the world, but. Did that for a couple of years when we first got married and then we came here.
I remember meeting you right after you got here out on Westfield, I think.
Yes, yeah, that was like one of the first things I did when I started. Y'all were just getting underway on that project. Yep.
Did you go to school?
A and M.
Any questions for us?
No, sir. Good to go.
Yeah.
Yeah, y'all just let me know.
Will do. Thank you. Maybe if there's a.
Trying to let you out the door. There you go. Good seeing you.
Anywhere.
You're gonna be great, absolutely. He has the voice freedom. He just seems so calm.
You know, you can't do that, right?
Okay.
I always appreciate you guys' love. So we have the big state of the city.
Yeah, have y'all been practicing?
Still planning. That's where I was. We've been running off.
Are y'all just deciding what to have, I mean like what slides to show?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna sit down in the morning and go over. Who's gonna say what, when?
Someone was fussing about the state of the city, saying why do you have to pay?
Yes, I saw that.
It's like, oh gosh, you know, it's not a city temple thing.
Yeah, and you know, you, but you would think, you know what, we ought to. At some point, right? We had these district forms sometime, sometime you ought to.
I know, yeah, the people that really just are looking for. Yeah.
Facebook Live. Exactly, exactly.
Hey, how are you?
Come in, come in.
Come on in and have a seat. How are y'all doing?
Good, how about you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Good. Very good, well, we're glad you're here.
Thank you.
So Parks and in REB.
Yeah.
Very good. Alright, so we have, as far as standard format, super easy. We have four questions, they're always the same four questions every year.
I'm just noticing that, I'm totally interrupting you.
Oh, no, no, you go ahead.
It says District Four, you're District One.
No, I don't, I don't think so. I think y'all have moved.
Yeah, twelve of them. She lives around the corner from you.
Oh? I thought y'all moved out further west.
No, they're.
Okay.
I was trying to talk Lester and I were running for council one time and then y'all moved.
Yeah.
That's right.
I live in a camp.
Yeah.
We're all over the map.
Yeah, it used to be.
That's right.
So, like I said, we have these four questions, but really, as you tell your story normally, you kind of answer all of them.
Okay.
So, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving, you know, what skills or talents will you bring?
Okay.
Et cetera.
Okay, well, I'm an Altristan for one, I've been on the board for two years, I'm coming off the board in May.
Your mother didn't want to get you involved in that?
Um, kinda, actually a lot of people, different people that I know, pushing for it, pushing for it, yeah. I think it's like a hundred and twelve members, something like that, so. And I'm also in the Celado Ladies League, and I'm a change, I'm ambassador, as Mike knows. But coming off the board, I need something else to do.
Yeah, probably like, you know, better when you're busy.
Yeah, and the remaining positions on the Altristan board are not anything I'm interested in, like, I don't want to be a treasurer, if you don't want to put that in your notes.
We have a whole department.
Nothing with the money, that's. But no, I mean, I have a service heart, and that's what I'm gonna do, I left Temple, we utilize the parks, my favorite if I may say is Pepper Creek.
Yep.
We ride our bikes down there all the time, so. Um, yeah, we just want more service. Lester and I are empty hesters, and so I have more time on me.
Duty is on our list.
She is, I'm so excited for her, yeah.
Did she do Leadership Temple?
She has not.
Have you? Have you done it? I'm guessing that you did, but you're everywhere, that's why, because you're an ambassador.
I haven't done any, yes.
We have one slot on revitalization. And four slots on Parks.
Yeah, I think you would really enjoy revitalization, is there a specific district that's open on?
Uh, no.
Well, yeah, share with me a little more on what's happening.
Yes, yeah, I'd be happy to, we have divided our older neighborhoods into different areas. So like the historic district, the garden district, Bel Air district, and in doing that, it's kind of giving it its own little identity. And we're hoping that it'll bring the neighborhood together more, and so we're putting up, you know, signage for, like monument sign, you know, outside the area, like, so we have arrived, kind of thing.
Right.
And then little hoppers on the street side, and then we're trying to do projects that we've identified throughout the city, but we have, I think, twenty right now that have been, different neighborhoods that have been identified, we're still looking at doing more. But it just kind of gives us an opportunity to talk to the actual people who live, and what do you want in your neighborhood, what do you see, what are those needs?
What's the, what's the neighborhood planning district for Woodbridge?
There isn't one. Uh, cause it's newer, I mean, we have underground utilities. I mean, that's, I had a couple of residents say our, our neighborhood is aging, it's like, gosh, no, I mean, we're really fortunate to have what we have.
See all the passes on the street.
Yeah, or, you know, I think we're about to start working on Western Hills, and it struggles with all of the geography over there, it's a mess, so. Yeah, there are a lot more needs than other places.
Geography doesn't stay the same for the days.
Yeah. Um, but what they've done, starting in the east side with Crestview and Ferguson Park were the first ones that we hit, and it just, it took off. And I think that those neighbors really felt like they were a part of making change, so. Um, I think just with your servants' heart, that something like that might be a really good fit for you. Cause you, you go, the city staff kind of dives in, and they tell you a little bit about the neighborhood and the boundaries, and then they start going door to door, and they poll people, and, you know, so you get to be a part of, you know, well, should we have more sidewalks, do they need, you know, more neighborhood services? I think that might be right up your alley.
And are there things that we would be able to provide?
Hopefully so, yeah, and that's.
Turn it for me if I.
No.
I'm just polling, yeah.
That's something else that I think is interesting, you find out the needs for that area, and then you do all the groundwork to, to prepare for it, and then all of a sudden a grant comes along, and we've already done the groundwork, so, you know, we can put that into effect and make that change, or in the next budget cycle, we, you know, that's already done, you can insert that in more easily than you could, cause it's all been vetted.
A lot of it is really, to me, the thing I love, I like about it is you are, you're helping these individual pockets, right, cause, I mean, Temple's a hundred thousand people, right? But most of us, we drive to our house, we go to the restaurants that are closest to us, right? So we, we, we have these little pods of where we shop, and where we eat, and who we know, and all those, so really what this is, this is helping a neighborhood becoming a true neighborhood, where they actually know your neighbor, neighborhood coalitions, think HOA with no dues. Okay, and no, no hammer, right, it's just people that care about their neighborhood that are getting together to better their neighborhood. Yeah, so it's, 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 it's community building on a, on kind of a micro level.
Yeah, okay, absolutely.
Yeah, I like it.
And then with parks, you have that on there too, and, you know, we've, we've got the most amazing parks.
We really do.
So fortunate, and really prolific, and we want to do more.
Yeah.
And if you use them, then you really understand how many people are out there utilizing, especially in Pepper Creek, cause you see the walkers, the bikers, the joggers, the people with their dogs, then you can see the kids playing soccer, and then the softball fields and baseball fields, which is so much going on.
All the dog parks do, I'm a dog.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's, is it, what's that park right there on Woodbridge?
Yeah, and it's, it's pretty small too, we just had this conversation.
Frail in a couple of, I mean, it's not.
Yes, there's not much to it, but we really had a wood bridge over the bridge, and the tornado took it away, so it's actually in Amy's backyard.
Yeah.
Amy Thomas's backyard.
But the, the Parks Department put the railing back up so we can utilize the bridge again instead of the goat path that we made on the side, and the plan is to put the bridge back up as soon as we get the FEMA stuff squared away, so.
I said, we have a Kia Bridge when we had a Cadillac Bridge. And we literally, like a week before, had taken family photos at that wood bridge, and.
Yeah, people are there all the time, they come from all over the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions for us?
I kind of dove into the part I didn't understand as far as the neighborhood revitalization, I really didn't know a whole lot about that, I think Lester might have been on that board at one time.
I think he was, yeah.
Um, and he enjoyed it, but.
Yeah, well, if that's something you're interested in, I think just as a people person, but not only to that, you see so much, cause you go to so many different events, and, you know, you're constantly meeting people and being in different sections of the town, it might, I think it might be a good fit for you.
Trust your chance. Anything else I want to?
What's Lester's at the lot?
Hold on, let me get my phone out, I'm recording this conversation. What do you mean?
No, no, I'm just kidding.
He's on as many boards as he has time to be on.
I know, work. Whenever I go back there, he's, he kind of, I get a wave, you know, hard headed.
Yeah, he's not working there, he's working in the yard, he never slows down.
Yeah. Well, there's nothing for us, do you have any questions for us?
Yeah, when we all make a decision.
Exactly. She'll call you, give you, or send you an email.
Okay.
And the starting date is April one, is that correct, that we'll have at our Thursday meeting, there's so much.
Yeah. This Thursday, she'll call this week, okay, a couple days.
Friday, call you Friday.
Do you, do you get in touch with them once we've slotted them, to let them know, or they have to?
The only time I ever call before the actual appointment is if they didn't apply for our board, and then we kind of thought afterwards, hey, would you?
Yeah.
But I think we already know which ones.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, pretty quick.
Okay.
Thank you, Tommy, I appreciate it.
Good to see you.
Yeah, you too.
Alright, take care. Bye bye. Uh, yeah, it'll be fun.
Yeah, see you later.
Yeah, what is, yeah, I think it wants us NPD on.
Oh, neighborhood.
Neighborhood, and just also, it's supposed to be.
Does she live in a? But we've made that concession almost every time now, it's almost.
Yeah, we don't want, we don't want a seat sitting open.
No, definitely not.
It's almost impossible.
I mean, I love, I understand the concept of being, it works, but.
Sorry.
It's hard to do, and sometimes I think they kind of focus only on that one, and then they lose interest, so it's kind of nice if they just have overarching appreciation for what's going on.
Um, can I turn the AC down a little bit?
Am I allowed to touch it?
Yes.
Does she go too high or too low? She has it set on.
That's what I would be, so, okay.
That's important, besides the attorneys telling us what we can't do.
Well, Linda, the.
Aren't they least supposed to be released on Thursday? Or not, maybe.
Oh. Okay. We have another one coming.
Talking about best.
You what?
Did you need me?
She lost one a while back. That's his first one. Is that his first?
Um, they've been cut off until they pay down. They, I mean, they can purchase, but they just have to purchase.
We eat dinner with Hannah's family, but Hannah's my oldest, she has two kids, six and three.
Okay.
And out there.
Alright, you bet.
The Duke, me, this is his favorite. And I usually get home after everybody else, and so I'll come out, open the door, and he knows it's me, and I hear Peter Patter come running into the kitchen where I come in the door, and when he gets to me, he freezes, when he sees me, he says, Duke, you can't catch me. He's off again. That's why I spent the first ten minutes at home chasing him. Last night I threw him on the couch, he bounced twice and fell on the floor, got in trouble. I tried to just throw a million on her head.
I doubled out, Tom Lee on the trampoline, broke his elbow, and I told him for a day, he's crying, just suck it up, man, he's fine.
Maybe he can get Tom Lee to see if they can make a pull from your roof.
Yeah, that's right, you were up there, like Mike.
Yeah, I got to talk to him.
Yeah.
What are you doing up there?
I know, oh.
He's trying to show me that. My thoughts on it. Thank you, Bruce. I actually told him, I don't think you could.
Thank you.
Talk about momentum, you gotta get the run off the slope of the roof.
Start with the running.
Oh.
This doesn't do that much, so. Just take off, it's a challenge, so.
We had, we went to Cancun, there for a reason, and we had a balcony, that was the, the little glass partition was about that high, and then just right outside was the pool. There were a few times, when I'm like, if I started this, I can run through the.
No, you're not alone.
I know I can make it.
Imagine yourself.
Did we move anybody around since that one?
We'd have Shane at three thirty. Louis, I called one of those later ones, like the last one, see if we win one.
I remember people that are interested in the airport any time around, usually there aren't that many folks that, that I remember.
Yeah.
There's still a lot going on out there, so people that have, either have or want hangers.
Yeah.
I assume we have like fourteen or ten was on our, I think we were getting down.
Yeah.
Mr. Brooks. Is airport, oh, Parks and Air Force.
I have like sixty seven slides for Wednesday.
I think we've got the passage.
Hmm?
Hardly go there's.
Yeah, you only have like forty minutes to speak.
Really?
Well.
Yeah, I guess.
Is it almost the CAC?
No, I didn't know that.
How are y'all?
How are you doing?
Good. Hey, Shane Brooks, hey, good to meet you.
Hi Shane, good to see you.
Good to see you, yeah. Mike, good to see you. Then you can say hello, sorry, don't, don't need to stand up, good to meet you.
You have a seat, head of the table.
Yeah, great, the pressure seat.
Yep.
So you don't do this all day, huh? Just, just that, okay, just last year, so, okay, that's good, yeah.
We used to, we would just get a package, of the people that were interested in serving, and we would just assign them.
Oh darts.
We did, it was the worst, we would just send people, and, you know, we would, oh Shane Brooks, you know, you know Shane, okay, you think he cares about the hybrid board, but sure, put him on.
Yeah.
And then you get a call, it's like. So we changed the process, and this seems to, that we want to slot you where, where your interests are, so.
That's great.
Yeah, no, it's good, it's good. Um, so, thanks for being here, you're in District Four, I see.
Yes, sir.
Um, this might's District. Um, so we had just, just sort of, just some general questions, and normally, throughout our conversation, you answer all the questions, so, tell us a little bit about yourself, why you're interested in serving, what do you feel like, you know, what are your talents that you can bring to the board, just.
Yeah.
Tell us what's up.
Good deal, um, yeah, name is Shane Brooks, I work at Alliance Bank Central Texas, Vice President there, and my wife and I moved here to Temple in twenty twenty-two. Um, originally grew up in Waco, and we moved from Fort Worth. Um, kind of the opportunity was to, to get here to one joint alliance, and kind of how, you know, growing a new, a bank into a new market, and that was a really awesome opportunity for me. Um, opportunity to work with Tyler Johnson, who I know a lot of you guys know, but also opportunity to get closer to family, I've got family in Waco, Robinson, and Belton, and Temple was kind of obviously right in the middle, which has been, been a really good deal, my mom is super excited. But really, like, the exciting thing for us, it was first time in like fifteen years that my immediate family was, was super close.
Yeah.
Um, what we didn't realize was how, how good and easy it was to get connected in the temple, um, you know, from being an outsider, that's always the intimidating part, so when my wife and I were trying to decide to move, it was kind of laying on the pros and cons list, and we're big planners, Kylie is a huge planner compared to me, but that was one of the, one of the hard things, but. Um, quickly we got plugged in with a church, which was, which was really easy, work was great for me specifically, and then my wife, it took her a little bit of time to get a job, but she was able to get one with Bell County through basically just getting plugged in with people, and that speaks to how, how great our community is. Um, one of the good things was, just from a work side, was able to get plugged in with the Chamber of Commerce, and then kind of go through Leadership Temple, which every single person that is new here that is in the chamber and hasn't done that, I always tell them, that is the best thing that the Chamber does. Um, quickly you can realize just how literally everything, not everything about our community, but what makes Temple unique, who are the big players, what is the, you know, super important things that as a new resident, we should be paying attention to, and also just for people who are. And plugged into the community, what they need to pay attention to, so was able to do that, met a lot of really good people through that process, and was a really good, good experience, and then through that, we just kept trying to get plugged in. Um, I was asked to join the Rising Leaders of Bell County, which, y'all have heard of that, great, if you haven't, it's kind of like the Temple Business League, but for people who are kind of new in their careers, and.
My kids are gonna get involved in that.
Good, good, it's, it's a good group.
Leadership Temple with Brandon?
Um.
Remember?
No, I don't, I don't think so, unfortunately, um, I was in the class, not this past year, but the year before.
Okay.
Um, but it was a really great experience, and, and that group has been good, just cause, again, it's kind of a monthly deal where you get to, you know, listen to people talk about what they do, how they're involved, and things like that, so that's been great. Um, I got kind of voluntold and to join the Temple Children's Museum Board, which in hindsight has been a lot of fun, um, on, on the executive board there, and kind of been plugged in with the Communications Committee. And it's one, that was one of my first times working with a nonprofit, um, on a board in that capacity, and with them, it's a really new, new is kind of the, the hard, hard thing to say, but I'm still relatively young in terms of how long they've been around, but they're not small by any means, they've got a good budget, they actually have staff, and we have a huge board, which is great sometimes. Um, but it's, it's been a, it's been a really good, good thing, and our budget is great, thanks to the City of Temple, we have grants from you guys, which has been great, um, but that has been a really fun thing to kind of use my skills in that, that area as well.
Do you have kids?
No kids, no, um, hopefully in the future, that's definitely something on our radar, um, but I'm gonna be uncle very soon for brother and his wife who are in Belton, they're finally having their first kid.
It's around the corner, you're gonna be the cool uncle.
Yeah, that's, that's the exciting piece, so, um, but yeah, no, it's, so since, just kind of getting here, um, part of our story was, you know, we didn't know much about Temple just because we're, you know, we, I grew up in Waco, my wife grew up in Frisco, and we were just trying to see a little bit more about it, and one of the first things we looked at was Parks opportunities and recreation things, cause we're big outdoors people, we like to spend our time outside and things like that, and I really checked the box, because we could see Crossroads, you know, Miller Springs, and all the different trail opportunities and things like that. Um, super excited about the pickleball courts coming to Crossroads, that's gonna be, that's gonna be fun.
Are you a pickleballer?
We are, we played last Friday, which was a disaster, cause it was so windy, oh my gosh.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But it was, so like. If you're gonna have paper covered or inside.
Yeah.
At least a windscreen, that'd be awesome, that'd be awesome, but, um, the point of that is like, when we first moved, that was one of the things on our list to like, check, and so the, the board, see if that I've, that I find a lot of interest in is the Parks and Rec Board, um, just for that perspective, because that is such a key parts of our economic development. Um, not only are we getting jobs, we're getting new businesses and growing in a certain way, but for the, the folks that move here for a job, like myself, or move here because of family, like myself, you want to make sure that those, there's opportunities in that field, so. Um, that's been a really big part of, of us, and kind of how we got kind of made Temple home, um, so that was a, that was a lot of fun, but, yeah, any questions, or did I cover anything, or you did not cover something?
Yeah, airport, do you do some stuff, do you have a plane or do anything?
No, I wish, that'd be fun, uh, my oldest brother was, is a pilot, um, he was in the Air Force, um, he flew the V one, and now he flies for Texas Farm Bureau. It's funny, he went from, he was like a bomber pilot, and now he is doing HR and flies the plane at Texas Farm Bureau.
Luke is with him.
Really?
Cause Luke was telling me, I'm in the insurance, employing benefits.
Okay, yeah.
And my son was like, so I was at Farm Bureau the other day, their HR guy's also their pilot?
He's got a mustache, yeah, yeah.
You say, why don't we have a plane? Exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
That's interesting, that's an interesting combo.
Yeah, no, he, he does it all, and sometimes he wishes he was flying a little more than doing HR, so.
I bet, like all of them.
Definitely, um, yeah, that, I think I put that one on there, just says like, you know, if the Parks thing didn't, wasn't the opportunity.
Yeah.
Um, same kind of line of like, economic pieces of our community, like the airport is a really big deal, in fact, my brother mentioned like, FBO, Temple is awesome, compared to everywhere else he flies.
A lot of people don't understand that it is, it is a gateway.
Oh, yeah.
To the community, for sure.
Absolutely.
It may not be for the majority of people, but for some, um, some big economic development opportunities, it's the way they get here, so.
Absolutely, and now that, so our, our office is up hillier than your outer loop, and my office is like staring, I feel like at one of the runways, but when you start to see. that's a nice gold stream or like more of those coming in, okay, those, we've got some important people coming into our community, which is a, which is a big deal.
Yeah, it's kind of like the day that we did the ribbon cutting. I think, um, Nick Saban had flown in to see some kid from Belton. And Elon Musk was flying overhead because there was too much activity that he didn't want to land. I'm like, look at us.
Yeah, that's awesome. That's awesome.
And that, that makes me feel really good to hear somebody come to town and for good reasons.
Right, and you, yeah, and you did your due diligence, you chose that.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, that's huge. Of course, we hear the exact opposite all the time, Temple boring, it sucks.
Yeah.
Nothing to do and to hear that.
Maybe that's, maybe I'm boring, but. I think, I think for us, like, you know, my wife and I, we're pretty mature for our age and, you know, we had, so when we lived in Fort Worth, we lived downtown and we had no kids, so we're like, oh yeah, we can walk to the restaurants and bars and stuff and that's great. Um, but we quickly realized once, you know, one buying a house, the two having kids and growing a family, really hard to do in the metroplex, especially if you're not around family.
Yeah.
And we had some friends, man, God bless them, who live in Keller and drive to downtown Dallas every day and they're on their second kid, both of them working. Like, when are you ever gonna see your kid? And really, which was one of the selling points that happened made to convince me to come here. Was like, he kept telling all about like how involved he is with his kids and how he does, you know, he coaches and he does all those different things. And you're like, I would never be able to do that in the metroplex. And the other side, side note to it is like my job is a lot more fun when you're in a smaller community. Granted, you get to see everybody to make sure that you're doing the right thing every time, which we try to do. Um, but it's, it's a lot more enjoyable when you get to do, do the things that, you know, benefit our community and also know the people that you're helping.
Yeah.
Um, because you can see like different things that come up, like I, we, we looked in to help with that project a little bit.
Yeah.
As opposed to when I was in Fort Worth, I was doing projects in Frisco or Rockwall or whatever and
You didn't get to see.
Never see those people.
I don't bump or some, right.
I don't bump into them at H U B, you know, on a Saturday when I'm like, oh my gosh, okay. Which, you know, those are still, those are still fun.
You see them in their element and by the first, it's, I mean, one of the things I love about serving here.
Yeah.
Right? So, and you know, a guy your age who has a heart for service would be swallowed up in Fort Worth. Right, you wouldn't even make it on the, to the interview list.
Right, right, and that's why.
Like in Temple, you can get started early and, you know, work through as long as you want to.
They sink your teeth into you a little bit, but it's, it's still been really good.
You have no idea.
I'm sure. But I think that's the, that's the exciting part about, you know, us being here and, um, just trying to find more ways to get involved.
Yeah.
And I think like, you know, we've done, I've done a nonprofit deal and, um, you know, a little bit of stuff with United Way and I wanted to try to throw Manhattan Ring in something municipal. So that's what, that's what this is. It's making my wife proud too, because she, she works for Bell County, she's the grant administrator. But she, you know, she's all about government work and everything, so when she said, when I told her I'm looking at Parks and Rec Board, she's like, oh, that's doing. So.
Team effort.
The thing is, is, you know, if you, and it sounds like you do, it's like you have the right heart. This is something that you can do for a long time.
Hmm.
You know, I mean Tyler is, is for a, a man his age, he has been super influential. And he's built a ton of respect in the community.
Right.
For the work that he's done.
Right.
It's probably not bad for his banking career either. And I don't know something why he's doing it, but it's not, it's not bad, it's about, it's about meeting a wide array of people and you get to do that, sir.
Yeah, I completely agree.
Yeah, so that's great.
Yeah.
Great.
We certainly appreciate your time.
Yeah, no, thanks for coming in and visiting with you guys.
Yeah.
Should be fun.
We'll let anybody volunteer.
Well, cool, anything else you need from me?
I don't think so, that's been very good, very informative.
Good deal.
Yeah. If you wait in front of his door, a little green light will come on and when, when you get the green light, you're there, you're ready to.
Thanks y'all, thanks y'all.
Hang in there with the rest of these interviews. Do the bear dance anymore?
I will.
Have a, that's Shane or Airport. That's interesting, he can look outside and see the planes take off.
Yeah.
Pretty cool.
He doesn't want to be there.
I don't think so.
But he's, sound like he'd be good.
Yeah, I think so too.
You know, people like that, you, you think, you know, you think, wow, great, he's enthusiastic, we want to be sure and slot him, but then you also want you want to be sure that you put him on something that he can seek his income.
Yeah.
Right, we didn't go, not doing that again.
Yeah.
Always said not a month doing that.
Yeah, and I think that we need to do this. A lot of people felt that way.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I would say that we are, as time goes by, even especially looking at the slated candidates, that we are getting better group of candidates than we were. But that is the process.
Yeah.
And the city secretary.
Yes, thank you.
I know, you just, nothing for you.
Um, City of Belton asked for our um, boards and commissions policy on interview process because David Lee, after he interviewed last time on Airport, he really enjoyed it, so he brought it back to Melton's council and said that.
And now he's got a CFO here checking this out.
They take them, David's kind of rated this to the airport board, he really agrees a lot.
Yeah, Bruce is like, I can't believe the Belton mayor is on a temple board. Like, yeah, the county seat, you know?
Yeah.
Um, he doesn't do anything halfway, David, so, you know.
He's been really. He's been really good. Brings up pertinent points and so without, without being a, a stir.
A pot stir.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's definitely not. So Caleb's kind of. You want to?
Well, the first move back college here. A house outside that had remember it had two lions on. Interrupted the stairs.
Yeah, a big wide.
Yeah.
Isn't that it? Isn't that it?
I think they have one there too.
Nine and Nugent?
I came to it was over there. I don't.
Big, big call, big house with like red terracotta towels.
I'm coming north side.
It's Miss Tally though. And that's another thing that guy owes me a lot of money. I've got a judgment against him.
I would probably owe you a lot of money if we'd bought that house.
Yeah.
We were kind of looking at that and well, we could fix this, fix this. They took us down the base. They have a basement because I have a basement. And it had a these little buggler things on the floor pop ups. So he said, when it, when it rains, yeah, those are to relieve the pressure. So the walls will keep in. So you can't put anything on the floor down here because it becomes a swimming pool. Okay, we're out.
Sounds like a house.
So stupid about that. We had that.
Yeah.
I think it's just, it must be a low water table.
When we had that, we put a his house. We had everything on jacked up on Halloween.
Hey, how are y'all?
Hey.
Good. How are you?
You've been working.
Yeah.
Good seeing you.
Hey.
Hey, how are you?
Good. Good to see you.
All right. We were just talking about you.
I am. Yeah, I just did ten years Georgetown.
Ten years at Georgetown.
What kind of schedule do y'all have?
The best schedule ever. It is forty eight ninety six.
Okay, I think we're getting to that, aren't we? Does that sound familiar? I think we were trying.
So, so lovely. You're at the station.
Forty eight hours.
Okay.
Off for four. Um, even though I've heard for Temple that while y'all are under y'all's current chief, that he has absolutely zero interest whatsoever in pushing for that schedule. I, I can understand it. It's a big change. I mean, where we did October twenty three is when we started that schedule. It's hands down the best on the twenty four forty eight.
Four days. Welcome.
Like the ones you're off. I know. Yeah, I mean, I don't ever take a break.
You're killing the firemen smoking.
Well, with the twenty four forty eights, it's you're, you're never not coming off or getting ready to go back.
Right.
Yeah.
So you're off for two days. If you have a rough night, I'm sleeping till noon and then I've lost half of one of my two days off.
Yeah.
The next night, you know, I'll be ready to go back the next day.
Yes, I can see that.
It's a fair journey.
Yeah.
Being there for forty eight hours, we've gotten busier. I think we're a little bit less busy than y'all might be, maybe.
How big is Georgetown? Same size, isn't it hundred?
Yeah, hundred to forty, thereabouts. We've got seven. Yeah, we also run EMS. Y'all have got AMR. You're right. So we run EMS in house. Uh, we got seven stations. Eight and nine are in the works. So within the next five years, we should have.
Y'all draw a hard line at the city limit, say?
Nope, no.
You'll, you'll get into Austin, you'll get into Round Rock and.
So we have mutual aid agreements with, with Round Rock and Gerald and all of Cedar Park Leander. Uh, we also serve the county. There's parts, my district runs all the way to Gary Park, which I don't know if y'all are familiar with it. It is way outside of town. Running hot. It takes us fifteen plus minutes to get out there.
Wow.
So it's big, but you know, they're planning on putting a more couple, couple more stations out there on that side of town.
Yeah.
Great job, greatest job in the world. I still love it.
Because you enjoy what you do. I mean, not everybody can say that.
That is very true, very true.
All right. So you've done this before.
Yes, sir.
But before we jump into it, you're currently serving on building standards.
Correct.
And neighborhood revitalization.
Correct.
Um, is he?
I think.
Still active on both sides? He's not about to start out of anything or?
I think this is my last term on neighborhood revitalization.
When, when would that be, Ken?
And he had one more term that's going, so you're so good.
But otherwise it'd be twenty six.
The never ending twenty five.
The never ending twenty six.
Okay, and the current term's up in October or April?
Oh, uh.
Oh, yeah, it's up now, but she said you wanted to stay on.
Yes, yeah, okay. On, on which one?
Building standards.
Okay. Neighborhood validation also? Okay. So we have a policy. You only serve on two boards at the time.
Okay.
So is there something that you want to bump out of?
I would bump out of neighborhood revitalization.
And you have planning and zoning, ZBA and DSAB. Is there anything of those three that?
I would prefer planning and zoning. That would be my preference. So my, my thought process behind this is I've started with neighborhood revitalization and buildings and standards. I love the, the neighborhood revitalization board. It's a great board. Working through the city plans or the neighborhood plans is a great process. There's the ability to see how things play out and see the change coming. But ultimately, there's really not a whole lot of, of say behind that board. I'm more interested in being able to get more involved in the planning process and have a little bit more. Yeah, a little bit bigger voice in, in what's, what's being done in the city and how can we change things to kind of meet a broader spectrum.
Looking at districts. Two. We must have had someone because um.
That's, that's why I was odd because I thought when I looked it up, I thought they only vacant seats.
I think we'll correct. Yep. Time around. But if no one from district three is interested in that, then you fill it with, you know, someone from another one. So. Um, we've got a couple of people interested that I don't think there's been any of them district three planners anything, but.
Does this have who's what districts they're in? Uh, this is what.
It does, but I think it's kind of genius because.
But they're not. Are these correct or is that where they're supposed to be?
That's where they're supposed to be.
So some of them are not. Looking at P and Z?
It's split for paid. Do you?
Oh, yeah.
The ZBA. They're definitely thinking for someone with construction experience always. Oh, that's an, as an alternate.
And ultimately, I'm more than happy to serve wherever I'm needed. It's, you know, I obviously have my preference, but if y'all need me somewhere, I'm plugged in.
Yeah.
More than happy to do, do whatever, as long as I can remain involved.
Yeah, well, I've been telling him how involved you are with neighborhood revitalization. I mean, I, I think it's really interesting.
It is. It's, it's a, it's a great board. Yeah, and, and something with a little bit of teeth. Right. It's, we just got done with our neighborhood plan and I went back and forth with the guys from KPA. I feel like I kind of pissed him off a little bit, but you know.
Then you'll reach the issue.
But you're asking for info.
Well, we actually, I mean, it, it worked out. I'm on twenty second branch. I got six and a half acres right there.
Okay.
So I'm smack dab in the middle of it. I've got all the, the wonderful, what we call wonderful new construction going in back there off the lube that I can see. Backyard that doesn't throw me the most, but you know, it is what it is. And that was, that was part of what we talked about for our neighborhood plans. Like, look, we can't do anything about that. That's already shot. So we were able to come to an agreement where we use that creek that the city just extended their sewer line is kind of the dividing line between old and new. And try and encourage development on that side to stick to the older shavings, which I think is fair.
Yeah.
But in the end, development's going to do whatever development's going to do. There's, there's really no key behind that. It's just a suggestion. A lot of developers will play nice, but some of them don't care.
Yeah.
We know that.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, P and Z, district three seat is open. He's in district. The other two are not. ZBA and DSAB don't really have.
No, one of them could.
Well, ZBA. It might be nicer than alternate with construction experience, but then you have to step away. Even as an alternate, not as.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Well, that may, ZBA, when they don't beat that often, the one they do, they have a lot of, it's a terminal board that it comes with. If you've been, been dealing with stuff in the uh. From the historical district, that's. And trying to keep some standards, that's what that wants to.
Yeah.
Yeah, standards is a big thing. You know, I'd, I'd like to see more of them throughout the city, but I also understand that as a municipal government, you know, the city's hands are kind of tied on what they can and can't make developers.
Yeah.
The ZBA is more and I was throwing up around there. I was on it for thirty years and then off and back home. It's actually, uh, a lot of times people are asking permission when they did something and they're not, you know, built over a line or something, but sometimes it's. It's, or, or they're. Sometimes it comes before the cart or the horse comes before the hard cart, but most of the time it's they already did it and didn't know what it's supposed to.
Sure.
Um, but it, it's not making uh. Any rules. It's determining if the people followed the rules and.
I mean, with, do you see?
Handsome extenuating circumstances that you should allow them to.
Yeah, sure.
Follow the rules.
Sure. New development stuff come through ZBA like if they're coming into a particular something that's, you know, zoned in retail and they want to do something different or we.
It's, it's a, it's not zoning. It's the only new construction I've seen is they. Did a survey wrong and built two brand new houses too close to the street in a brand new neighborhood. A lot of times it isn't, it, it is things where they've. They built a carport out the front of their house and there were twenty five set, twenty five that sit back in the houses there already.
That case was one street over from where I'm at.
But it's stuff like that that you're, and you're, you're actually trying to determine it's. They usually wouldn't be there if they weren't breaking the letter of the law. The law that's kind of determining if they had. Had or have, it's supposed to be if they have good reason to allow them to, to have a variance.
Sure.
And then just, you know, I'm. It's, it's kind of, it doesn't beat the law.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm always, I'm always interested in learning more about city codes and everything else. I know we're getting ready to, we're in the process of uh. Redoing.
UDC.
The UDC, there it is. Um, they've had one meeting about that that I went to and I haven't heard anything about. So I don't know where.
It's still ongoing. Um, it seems to be very slow moving.
Extremely detailed.
Yeah.
Very, very.
We, we get updated every once in a while and most of it's just, yeah, I don't know. We, we don't dig into that much. So it's not something I'm really. Staff right now is still trying to, they're not. They're not all together on what they want to present. Yeah, it's, it's tough. I know there was an outside consultant hired, but I know in the, at least in the permitting office on Brian Chambers' side, there's, there's been a lot of turnover in the office too. So that's, and that's hard to get everybody on the same page.
But I've noticed and have been pointed in, is that you have to, to apply the standard. At such a level that the one person that's going to come in and do the very least amount of work. That you, you need to make sure that our standard is. That, 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 yeah, that it's about that. But there will be people that won't do the right thing.
Absolutely. It's just like working a code. You know, you know, code is always the minimum standard. We always want to see above board, but there's everybody. Majority of developers, they build to code and that is all you're going to get out of it.
Yeah, that I always appreciate our local, um, our local guys. You know, they, they do the right thing and you get someone fly in from out of town. You know, they just want to make money and run.
Lashel building code is something that's been vetted across the whole country, even somewhat the world to a point where development code is something that's. Made right here and it's big and can have a lot of loopholes if somebody's willing to look for them. So. More so than building codes a lot. Yeah, and we're, we're several years behind on our building codes. I think we're still on like seventeen. Well, that's actually.
Yeah.
Nobody, you don't want to be the very latest. No, you don't want to be. I know what's in them. I don't want to be part of it. I mean, yes, I understand that it's for safety, but some of the, some of the stuff. Even, even if you do one, a lot of times the building materials and processes haven't caught up with the very latest code and it's. But you're very expensive. Five years from now, it'll be a lot cheaper to build to the twenty twenty three code than it would be today.
Yeah, I've always, and I, I don't know all the details, but I've always heard they lost like one or two versions behind the bills currently for that reason.
I remember some of that the valve that they were requiring in one of the codes that wasn't even available when they wrote the code and now it's twenty bucks or so. It's, it's the typical engineers and everybody get behind it. They write all that stuff and they have absolutely zero field experience of implementing such things into the real world.
But they even made a new bathtub.
Bell.
At least they get in the code by himself. I'm the city.
That is happens.
I mean, you know, you, you write the code to a product you want to sell. Influence.
Our fault GFCI breakers. I mean, those still a hot ticket item and they are notchy. But they have a purpose except with gas furnaces where the igniter, the breaker seat is an arc and the truth and. You know, I would like to say that I haven't passed city inspection and gone back to take that up, put a regular breaker in.
What?
You're off the board.
Yeah, I know. I know. It's, it's terrible. It's terrible. But if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. I don't, I don't know.
So we're gonna, um, after this tonight, we're gonna figure out where we're gonna slot everybody.
True.
And um. We'll just make note that there. If, if it makes sense to put you somewhere else that neighborhood revitalization is the one you'll back out of and just have an extra open there. So we can, we can move all the, all the chess pieces around if needed. Okay.
Yeah.
That's good. Anything else? We, we know you, we know you want to know.
That's very, I'll answer whatever questions you got for me. We said three questions. I'm, I'm ready. Don't know what they are.
But we were talking before you got in here, but we appreciate, I mean, the boards that you're on, you're there, right? You attend, you give input and you know, that's, that's what we want.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm here for. Nobody's, you know, you don't make any progress. We can quiet. I may ruffle some feathers from time to time, but I try to do it professionally.
All right.
Absolutely. All right. I'll get anything else here. See, I'm getting the next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So can I, I appreciate it.
And there's a, there's a motion detector.
There you go.
There you go.
Got it. All right.
Yeah.
We'll see y'all. Office neighborhood.
And then you said you didn't have to if he's an alternate.
Not if he's an alternate. Cause it's never, you know, turn.
How was the ZBA doing with, I know at one point I was an alternate for like five years. I'm going to have the meetings because the chair, vice chair didn't even. I never went and didn't get to participate.
Robert Mass and Sam Guthrie did not want to be appointed, being reappointed. So that's the only reason we have.
They're regular members, right?
Mass stepped away from everything. Um, I don't know if he has something else going on.
I think he's kind of backing out and turning his company over.
Sam Guthrie.
A little bit.
Said he was too busy.
On that, I'll say if, if possible, we want to move off and it's up into real positions.
Yeah.
I sat on that board for like six years and watched the holes block them. Board members come and go while I sat there being an alternate.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
But I would.
Hey, how are you? Got your green on?
Yeah, I'm green.
Hi, Jessica Walker.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
How are you? Good to see you.
Hello. Nice to meet you, Amy Harriman.
So Amy is over at Texel.
Okay, great.
What's your title over there?
Chief Operating Officer.
Yeah. Very good. Very good. We're about a building friendly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. No, I think it's a.
Closer than we're working on.
Good.
Okay, so.
We got a building, we need a building. I'm down to sit in both floors and upstairs.
And I can guess by your sayings, he's like.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for, uh, being here. Do you have the standard advisory, what, uh, does DSA B not require a, um, district?
It actually has a lot, and it does have a.
Counting.
There's some, it has a banker's spot.
Okay.
All right, very good.
So tell us a little bit about yourself, tell us why you're interested in serving, what skills and talents can you bring?
Okay.
What's going on?
Well, I honestly never knew I could serve on anything for the City of Temple because I don't live in the City of Temple. Um, worked with Nancy Glover, I believe it was Arbor Hope, I think is the name of the project, I was partnering with her. And I got to digging in the website a little bit and I'm like, huh, you don't have to be a citizen in Temple, but I do work here. And so it never even occurred to me to pursue this. Um, I've been at Texel Credit Union as a chief operating officer for twenty years. Um, prior to that, I worked at Scott and Mike Health Plan, my last job there was the sales manager.
That's where we met.
That's where we met, we used to do many years ago.
So long.
All this, all this open enrollment sessions. Or they, they were.
For me.
And mine.
Um, but I, I do commercial lending, I'm, I work, um, commercial insurance and consumer insurance. And so I'm very comfortable with reading commercial documents and, um, feel like I should be involved, I've been fairly involved in volunteering my whole life.
Are you working out of downtown or the new building?
I would, I was downtown and now I'm at the new building.
Downtown building's taken.
Oh, I didn't realize it was.
Yeah.
Like you have some starter.
That's it. I think those got moved.
Okay. Yeah.
Such a beautiful building, I know y'all are so proud of it.
It is so nice.
True.
I have not had a chance to tour it.
It's better from the inside.
I have seen Stephen King's paintings and I think they just look so lovely, there's so much color and then the white walls and.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Nice to see local artists.
And he's a praiser for us as well, we used to.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
It's a small world.
Yeah, it certainly is.
Okay, what else? Wouldn't you like to accomplish as a board member?
I would just like to be able to contribute a way that helped, helped the council. Got the experience and so would like to find other areas to be involved.
We really appreciate that, you know, we've said we're, we're all volunteers, you know, we're giving of our time and it's nice to see other people that are willing to do the same, so we, we certainly appreciate it.
Absolutely.
How often did the DSA B meet?
That's the as needed one, I want to meet more.
Oh, that's the one.
Jenna, what other boards are available at the county? Like.
Your board's one. Um, Historic Preservation Board, I'll come.
Do you get the vibes with Tony on there for?
I have just, um, I would tell you, I, I actually turned that one for several years, it has a banker's spot. You wouldn't have, it's going over pretty high level of construction details most of the time when we get to meet, um, that. I doubt you would be real interested in.
Okay.
It's kind of a, when they set up the board, they have lots of people that don't really know, we've had, I know we've had some, some of those other, like a. Realtor and a maker and some folks get on, they're going to set up a couple of meetings and they say, I don't have any idea what you're talking about and they get off.
Well, I'm willing to serve somewhere else.
That's, that's why I was asking Jenna, what else is available to the county, because I, you know, it'd be excellent on a board that fit you well.
Building is standards, says profession specific in some county, I don't know what that profession is though.
But that one, it's usually electrician or.
We just lost our electrician.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We ever get on YouTube, could you be?
I'd just hate for you to get on one and be sitting there.
Not enjoying.
Yeah, not, not.
Feeling like you're participating.
What they're talking about.
And you're busy.
Well, I appreciate that.
If we're gonna take your time.
Yeah.
We wanna.
I had it working for you. I happen to have Tina and actually she could be very good on something that she. Know something about.
But that one, that one meets as needed. If, if that worked, it would be something she could get a beat with on, that, you know, it's not monthly to a, a mandatory meeting, it's something. At least there would be something there, you can learn.
Mm-hmm.
You know, something, something, I don't know, Mike, you've got the experience on that.
I mean, you should, you see how a board works, kind of, oh, that's a little bit, that one's a little different.
What do you recommend?
Uh, words, that's what I was. So Airport and BSA is the, is the two that are, have counties.
Mm-hmm.
People. The building standards would be, you would, you would understand that more, it's still construction E, but. It's stuff is understandable by, but pretty much.
Sure.
Because like, the SAB, you're sitting there, we're looking at the, the inside of the fire hydrant or something.
I'm not gonna understand.
None of us.
Would you think building standards would be better?
It would be, it would be. I mean, that's, that's one anybody can. You know, it doesn't pay. Generally, the thing I was thinking, do as much. Construction knowledge though.
That one meets.
Uh, Airport fits too, except for Tommy's already been there.
Yeah, I, I don't think he would enjoy meeting with him after hours.
It'd be a close, it'd be a short drive from work.
It would. Maybe he'll get tired of him.
Well, I think he's been there seventeen or eighteen years now, I hadn't got sick of him yet, so.
He's also one of the good guys, you know, it's, sometimes we get some people that just want to, you know, punch something on their, whatever.
Right.
But he gets in there and you know, he digs in, gets involved, so.
Well, maybe you can just trust us to, to find something that might be fitting for you, I mean, we don't want to waste your time, we certainly appreciate you offering up your time to us, so.
Or, and if you decide that I'm not a good fit for this year for something, that's, that doesn't hurt my feelings. Um, the only one that I would not want to be on is the one, anything associated with the, the animal that I'm too.
Good to know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got that, I got that.
I would end up with everyone, I can't.
For that reason, the only time I've been to the animal shelter is with the ribbon cut, because I was scared I'm gonna see all these little puppies in there, I want to take home.
Yeah, well, we'll do this again in October and more will become available then, so we'll make sure that we keep yours on file, just in case we got.
You've done it through them.
Around and I appreciate that.
So your application stays on file for two years.
Okay.
Okay, and so if, if, if we don't find something that will be good for us and for you, then, um, that application stays on file, Jenna. Uh, comes through those and finds, um, you know, other opportunities will be in touch, so.
Okay, well, I appreciate your time. Well, cute, it was so nice to meet you.
I love that green top.
Thank you, it's the only, only thing I own, it's not a Texel t-shirt.
Yeah.
That you wear to work every day.
All right. All right, well, y'all have a good day, thank you.
There you go.
You have a green light up there.
Okay.
You're ready to go, no, you're not.
This is the test.
Bye.
See you, Amy. The two really religious. We've had a couple of people like that that got on there and. I wanted to, they may kick me off the board if I said over there, I wanted to say like that, especially when I first got on the bank board, they're talking about. Details, financial stuff that I want. All right, since it's just as it is. My whole, um.
Panels.
Are we still recording? Oh, we are. Okay, nevermind.
We'll wait.
Hmm. Yeah.
And they actually watch it.
Do we have a long leg yet?
He's not here yet. Yep.
I'm sorry.
All right, well, thank you for having the interest of serving. And so we're gonna answer a couple of questions and you might answer all of our questions in one conversation. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving, what are your skills and experiences that you would bring to the board?
So um, the reason why I feel like I've become full of serving or why I feel that I have the ability to. Ever since a young age, after graduating high school, I've always had something in my heart to tell me to serve. So I knew I didn't want to go to college right away. So I joined the air force and it took me on a wild ride, went to South Korea. And this was just as a military police officer. And so I was just a military police officer doing ID checks and searching vehicles. It really wasn't my passion. I wasn't really interested in law enforcement. But I did see the canine guys and that were that were with their dogs and that that was really motivating to me. So I switched over to canine, met my wife while I was doing all that. And we served as canine handlers for four years. And they're just very involved in the units, even if as I was attached to the canine unit outside of the main police department. I still led a coalition board that would meet for junior enlisted, the younger guys would meet with the commander, the top three commander, the chief and the first sergeant of the unit. So that way they can have a unfiltered discussion, a professional discussion with the commander and tell them exactly what was going on at their level. Because I mean, it always gets filtered like, okay, what the junior list you're saying gets filtered so many times until the commander says, hey, how's everything going at the gates? And they say it's going great, sir. Everything good. But you know, if we can have a professional conversation on what's truly going on, so that way there's certain calls that can be made. Oh, we'll fix that or the commander would say, oh, you don't need that? Sure, let's hit, let's hit that. All right, no, we got it. So we just have lots of resolution that would be that would happen to that meeting. So it gave me a division of how something like that was very effective in a unit. However, I did separate, I think, five, six months after starting that. So even the chief was like, what's going on? But I had a, I, we had a first born that was along the way and they were already talking about deploying me. And so I said, I'm ready to settle, ready to separate, go set roots down in Texas. I'm originally from Houston, but I've always loved the central Texas area. And so my wife and I were moved to Fluterville in 2022 and we were looking at the market. Housing was crazy, so we settled in Temple, got a little more bang for our buck out in Oak Ridge. And we were both using the VA loans. That was, that was kind of hard at the time with the markets being so crazy. But once we got here, I started the dog training business, which I kind of had like a concept for. But immediately I got involved at the shelter with rescues.
What's the name of your business?
Next Level Canine. So I don't have a physical location, but it is a lot of in-home training and, and certain board and training, just, just in our group training classes and stuff.
I've got a really bad dog. You need to be skinny.
So, so I got involved with the, with the Temple Shelter immediately because I was, you know, the city that I was attached to. And I always saw Bell, Bell County, but something was calling me just to go to Temple Shelter. Immediately they, they allowed me to come in and Amy, the coordinator down there, really, you know, I've always seen eye to eye with her. Because I know that those people are good, you know, it's just they're dealing with an overwhelming problem. Lots of dogs and not enough people that are willing to adopt. So I understand the problem at hand, understanding where I can be effective. I'm on top of being a business owner, I help lead the Bell County Business Group every Friday that meets at Deadfish Row. And so I am able to work in a team, speak in front of others. I don't, I don't feel as nervous as, as most would. And just being able to get my points across, I feel like I am more prepared stepping into this interview. I wasn't really prepared because I didn't know what would be asked. But if I know what the topic is about, if I know what the discussion is about, I tend to be a little bit more prepared and study ahead of time. So that way, you know, I can at least be a little effective in the conversation than when I bring to the table.
Are you doing tight in here?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I think you covered it all.
Yeah.
The skills, talent, experience.
Do you have any questions for us as well?
Yeah.
You pretty much covered it.
No, there's not much questions. I just, this is, this was just my first step into getting involved in community in this, in this way. I think business owners, there's plenty of opportunities to donate or to like with the tornado relief. We, me and another buddy JT, we, we did the feeding or sorting hot dogs and hamsters out of Tarboro last year. So I've always just had that, that inkling to, or inkling to serve. And so I figured this is just my first step into it and yeah, hopefully I can help out the community.
That's so nice.
My wife, she's in U M H B as a nursing student. So her heart wasn't, wasn't as much into canine, you know, we were separating and we're looking at what our plan, yeah. And, and I was like, you know, I really like the dog thing. Every, every job kind of has, you know, nonsense or stuff that you gotta deal with that you don't like. But at the end of the day, to say you work with dogs is super awesome. And now I, I get to drive around Bell County because I do only just service Bell County. I get to drive around Bell County, meet other owners and these owners, you know, they come from all walks of life. And then the dogs do, just the different routines and behaviors and all the different situations. But that's just super cool that, that my job revolves around that at the end of the day, even though I gotta deal with taxes, but keeping all that crazy nonsense. It's still fun and it gives me flexibility, time to one, raise my two girls as my wife's going to nursing school. And also start this business and continue to grow and now hopefully serve in some.
Yeah, I mean, you love what you do and you want to volunteer after hours to do more of what you love. That, that really says a lot about you.
Absolutely.
What year is your wife in?
Uh, so she's, she'll be graduating at the end of this year, yeah, December.
Ask her if she knows Dr. Pilkington, my wife.
Dr. Pilkington, yeah, yeah, sure, I sure will, absolutely. She, we actually started, we live in Fluterville, we were, we were both at Concordia together. And she would have graduated last May, I believe. So it was hard. But she was in her third trimester with our second born, driving down to Kyle at like three, four in the morning in Kyle, Texas. And it was, it was tough just being attached to Concordia. And so I said, you know what, U M H B has such a great program and you're going to be tied with the locals and you're doing clinicals at local facilities that you'll probably end up working at instead of driving all the way down to Austin. So it worked out for us. She had to wait a little longer, but I think she's built her own community of friends and people that are in the Bell County area. And I think that's what we need as a, as a younger couple trying to start our careers over again.
Man, how old you are?
Twenty-nine, I'll be thirty this year.
Very good. Any questions for us?
No, no, I don't know. What's the time on, when I'm waiting to hear?
Yeah, Jana will get back with you this week.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, so she'll be back with you this weekend.
Okay, yeah, awesome.
Friday, probably.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, thank you so much.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Super nice to meet you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, thank you so much.
And Dr. Pilkington.
That's not what I asked, okay. Over here, this, well, there you go, see the green light there.
There you go.
All righty.
I need him to fix the thing. I've got a dog with ADHD.
Yeah. It's in the house.
That's the one. Yeah, she's, she has the energy, like she walks in front and be looking behind just always just.
Where are we going?
Yeah, so exciting. How are you?
Good.
How are you?
Good.
Good.
Literal and metaphorical hot seat here. Yeah, but it is so hard.
Thank you for being here. I'm Tim, I'm the mayor.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Thank you, it's nice to meet you.
Bo Grant, District Two. Hi, Jessica Walker, District One.
Mike Pilkington, District Four.
Mike wants to lead us off.
First, I didn't get your name, so.
Thank you.
Before thirty, ready?
Get on my right sheet here.
We stepped one in and it's still on time.
Well, I'm getting there. First, thanks for having an interest in, in serving our community. As you know, we all, we all do too, and as volunteers as well, so we understand that. So you're looking at library in the N R A B, but willing to serve on any board. So what we've been doing is, we have a list of questions, but most people would get through the first question and most everybody has answered all of them. So our first question is, tell us a little about yourself and why you're interested in serving.
So I am local-ish to the area. I was born at Scott and White, raised in Parker Heights, Colleen, moved to Austin for a few years and then moved back here. And really like the community, really like, you know, the people that I've met, that kind of thing. And as I'm getting older, I'm more interested in how the city is working, how it's serving, you know, how can I help? My dad lives in a small town in Mississippi. He served on an advisory board there. And, you know, I saw what he was doing and how he was helping and so it piqued an interest for me. And so I started looking, what are things I could do? And I ran across the advisory boards and it's like, you know what, I'll put in for him, maybe, maybe I'll be a good fit.
Yeah, we certainly appreciate that. As volunteers ourself, we certainly appreciate you offering up your time. You live in District Three, just curiosity, like where do you live in the?
Um, I live off of Winchester. It's off of Thirty First Street down by like Bush's Chicken, that area, Winchester, and there's like the neighborhood backup in there.
Okay, you got a lot going on over there.
Yeah.
Oxford, Branch, all of that, okay, yeah.
The street that was supposed to be a thoroughfare forty years ago that got stopped Canyon Creek.
Winchester?
Yeah.
So the library, do you spend time at the library?
Um, I've spent a little bit of time physically at the library. I use the online services quite a bit and try to keep up. A lot of the things that I'm like, oh, I'd like to go do that, happen in the middle of the day and then I work. That makes it hard sometimes to go and, and be there, but I definitely enjoy it. I spent my youth working in bookstores and so books to me are kind of the cornerstone of a community.
Yeah, I certainly understand that. They, our library has kind of gone through, it's, it's evolved into something that it wasn't before. I mean, our new librarian has taken it to another level and has the outreach is just, it's tremendous, really.
I love the idea that I see more and more with libraries becoming what they call third spaces. It's not your home, it's not your work, it's a third space for you to go and spend time and meet with your community and that kind of thing. And I see more and more of that and I'm seeing it with our library, you know, programs and things like that.
You read that book about, between library, about third spaces, something bowling. But it talks about, you know, it's, it's, it's your church or the bowling alley or it's kind of that other place where you gather.
With your community.
Community, right.
Yeah.
With black interests, very interesting podcast.
Yeah.
Now listen to it.
Um, yeah, I saw a video about it.
Yeah.
Like someone was talking about like, where's the third space? Is it, you know, it was your church, it was, people used their offices kind of as a third space, you know, and with a lot of people going remote. You know, finding those third spaces and I love that the libraries are becoming that.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, so neighborhood revitalization is another thing. Do you, do you spend a lot of time in your neighborhood? Is that what?
I do, I walk my neighborhood quite a bit. And it's kind of interesting because it is such a neighborhood, neighborhood. You know, it's not like there's a lot of business. Yeah, it's really close to a major thoroughfare, but there's not a lot of business right there. And so it's really just neighborhood. And so I spend a lot of time walking, wandering around, that kind of a thing. And then expanding out into the city, which is sometimes hard. I, I lived here for an entire year before I realized that everything out on like West Adams existed. Yeah. Because it didn't exist when I was younger. And then when I moved, when I moved here, I was like, I went to go look up, I needed to take my car in someplace and they said Adams. And so I assumed, you know, Adams. Right over here. And then it started taking my directions and I was like, I, I was listening. Well, I was listening to the directions, I was on my motorcycle and I was listening to them and I'm like, I can't see where I'm going. I said, where is this? And then I turned and I was like, none of this was here, I swear, like a year ago.
Yeah, it popped up quick.
Yeah.
That's interesting, okay.
It says willing to serve on any other board. That's wonderful. I mean, they're just open to.
I'm open to where the city kind of needs me, where I would be able to serve. I mean, there's some that I would probably not be a good fit for, like I know nothing about airplanes. Other than how annoying sitting in the airport can be, like.
You're not the best fit.
Yeah, I'm not probably the best fit for that board, but.
What, what other kind of skills or experiences or anything do you have for, that might fit with some?
Um, I do a lot of genealogy work with my own family and I started out as a history major. So that's a big thing for me. So I know that we've got some historical stuff here and doing the research and that kind of stuff. So that kind of interests me. I don't have formal skills in that area, but I don't know, you spend twenty years of your life doing research and sometimes I think you're as good as anybody else.
Yeah, for sure.
I thought it fits with library, the genealogy stuff, doesn't it?
I'm an organized person, so I try to bring that to whatever I'm doing. And then I, at work, I'm considered a, I call myself the gorilla glue. I'm the jack of all trades that kind of knows a little bit about everything. And if I don't know what I know who to go find.
Right.
And I think that's a really important role.
Where do you work?
I work for a company called Flex. It is probably one of the largest companies you've never heard of.
Okay.
It's the third largest manufacturing company in the world.
Sounds here.
There's a branch of it in Austin and I started at the company in Austin. I work in marketing. And I started there and during the pandemic, I decided I was gonna buy a house and couldn't afford anything in Austin. And so I talked to my boss and they agreed to let me go remote. And so I started looking further out and found a house that I loved in Temple and so house moved.
There it is.
I'd say every exit from the middle of, of the large municipal area is about five thousand dollars in cost.
Yeah, probably. More than that, actually, in some cases.
Yeah.
I mean, I was, for what I bought my house in Temple, I was looking at four hundred square foot fixer upper condos on the outer rim of Austin, like in the way north Austin or around Rock area.
Wow.
And I was able to buy a home here, you know, and so for less, yeah.
Yeah, is your work, uh, the library board meets at twelve o'clock on, on a Tuesday? What is it for Thursday? But it's a noon time, are you, is it flexible enough to get?
Yeah, it's a matter of knowing when I need to be there so I can, you know, just block out my calendar and and for that matter, the library probably has wifi.
Yeah.
Probably sit in the library and work, you know, like I can sit there and work, that's my big deal.
Okay. Well, good.
Certainly nice to meet you.
Beautiful candidate, so that's, that's good.
Anything for us?
I know that the library has a, has a spot open or any of the others, like where are you guys looking and kind of what are you guys looking for?
Um, definitely the library and I don't think we've had.
She doesn't like airports.
Then we have two spots on the library, one spot on animal services, I think.
Uh, building the standards of more construction.
A lot of it's construction or ecology.
You know, emergency services. Left with the fire department, you know, and some parks and neighborhood revitalization.
How many for N R A B?
Uh, one. In the library.
NBA.
Library has two.
What are you guys looking for in a person?
Um, I would say a number of things and they're, they're pretty, they sound pretty elementary, but then our experience has been is that they're not that elementary. We want, what we want, we want someone that's a good team player. I think sometimes people, they, and that's why we do these interviews, right? Because we need to weed out some folks. Some people think that the, that them serving on a board now is their platform. And, and what the, what the, what the job of board members is, is to carry out the strategic vision of Temple City Council.
Sure.
Right, so you don't work for us, your job is to, as a board member, to use your passion to bring good ideas and to be supportive of the library. And then when necessary, to bring possible policy changes or issues to the attention of the city council.
Yeah.
Right, so that's, that's what, that's what we're looking for. And then frankly, this is the elementary part, is we're looking for somebody that's just, that is, knows her team player and frankly will show up when they're.
I, I understand, I completely understand.
Yeah, you look at them like, because you know, here we have a policy, it's three meetings, right, three unexcused and you're off the board.
Good.
There was one guy that I, that I spent a lot of time recruiting and talking to this guy. And then here comes the notice that he's missed three meetings in a row and he's like, oh, well, I didn't, I didn't know that, I just hadn't been coming. You know, it's my time, you know?
Yeah.
So we just, you know, want responsible people that, that are willing to dig in and, and contribute. That's what we're looking.
That, I, I'm like you, it sounds elementary, I know that it's not.
Don't know.
I know that it's not. I have seen my fair share of people that are just like, oh, that's a suggested.
Yeah.
I grew up, on time is late and five minutes early is on time and late, you might as well just not even come. Like, just don't even bother.
Yeah.
And it always surprises me the people that will walk into someplace, oh, I'm thirty minutes late, it's fine. And I'm like, no, that's not okay.
We'll see you next time, maybe.
Yeah, maybe.
So, anything else?
No, just thank you so much. We really appreciate you being here. We're so glad that you're enjoying Temple, that you chose us and, and that you're diving in, that really means a lot to us.
We appreciate it.
She's gotta be cool, she rides motorcycles.
I do, I do.
You ride a hog or you ride a moped?
I, well.
The difference.
I, I ride the equivalent of a hog. I do not ride a Harley, but I ride a thirteen hundred batter. So I am on a big girl bike.
There you go, there you go, I love it.
Yeah, and I almost didn't put in because I was like, you know, I don't necessarily fit what I think of as somebody working in a city type position. I'm like, I've got purple hair, invisible tattoos and I'm riding a motorcycle and I'm like, I don't know that they're gonna like me, but I'll put in for it, I live here.
And you talked about third spaces, right? I think probably almost anywhere, the library is the most, in many cases, the most open minded.
Yeah.
You know, so I think probably the library, if it enters.
Yeah.
I don't care about, I ride a bike and do lots of, I'm all thing myself.
All right, well, that's, that's all we've got.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, of course, of course.
That mayor doesn't listen.
Thank you guys so much.
You bet, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and you can, there's a little. Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh huh, take care.
You too.
You asked her about a moped, girl from my accountant's rode a bar, well, it was a Sportster, but it was a Harley. Yeah, he was going to Temple College and she rode up, went up there one day and she parked, they had a little motorcycle spots. She parked and she's getting off her helmet, getting her backpack and everything and this guy rides up on a moped and gets off and he's like,
Hey.
Oh, looks at her, oh, you ride too fast.
Awesome. Hey, Jim Davis.
Will.
That's me, Will.
Yeah. Introduce yourself around.
Jessica Walker.
Will, we'll run to you.
Mike Pilkington. You like the water or anything?
No.
David, man, how are you doing today? Bill, water or anything?
Uh, no, I'm fine, thank you.
Well, thank you for being here.
Yeah, of course.
We certainly appreciate it. The District One, you're in my district, where do you live?
Yeah, yeah, I just moved out to Fifteenth Street over there.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been here for about eight months now.
What do you think?
Love it.
North or south?
Good.
That's south. I mean, I've been born and raised in Texas, Temple, never really left. I tried to leave once, but school just brought me right back.
Brought you back.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't leave anytime soon, so I'll build a family here eventually.
Great, well, we're glad to hear that. We appreciate you being here.
Of course.
And we have a couple of questions, but really in our conversation, through the questions, you'll have answered all of them.
Yeah.
But I just, as we get to know one another, so tell us a little bit about yourself and what you're, why you're interested in serving.
Yeah, yeah, uh, I mean, at first, just running a college, I was straight into finance. Started building with the loan officers and just kind of building what kind of surveys they had throughout the Temple, Belt and Colleen area. And then I kind of transitioned slowly into insurance, you know, just whatever happened in the, in the central Texas area. And eventually I just started talking to business owners, you know, they couldn't find the right spots here and there. So it's kind of made up my mission to see, you know, what I could do for them in the near future and see what I could help out with, with their needs and their businesses. That's pretty much it.
So how, you chose parks as something you might be interested in? Do you spend a lot of time in our parks?
Uh, I definitely do. I live like real close to Jones Park, I mean, it's like thirty minute walk away. And unfortunately, from what I've seen a lot there is a lot of homeless people just there, just kind of trashing it up. And I know me and, you know, me and my wife, we go out there and every now and then we just start picking up whatever we can around the area. Um, as well as the current fight field, I know there's a park over there and, you know, throughout the weekends, we like to go on a stroll there and same, same deal there, just a little bit of rubbish and trash. And, you know, we like to go out there and at least do a little bit of our part and picking up there.
Oh, that's nice of you, thank you. Um, is there anything else that you might be interested in besides parks?
Parks was kind of, yeah, the one, I know there was a deal with, uh, uh, there's a Parks and Rec team that came out to the Arleth, the Arleth, the church in Temple. And their team just didn't seem that motivated to come out. You know, they just kind of sat under their chairs and just kind of waited for people to approach, not really necessarily standing out and just inviting people over. Because, you know, they have their little stands every now and then, but not enough attention that was brought over to it, so.
And then the neighborhood.
I think it was, I think it was like the Los Cruces neighborhood, if that was in Our Lady's neighborhood, then that's things that, right? You know, I think so, that's one question, if you're in District One or Two, that you could buy Jones Park?
Yeah, Jones Park.
And that's two.
Is that District Two?
Okay. And a stop fifteen.
Yeah, if it was north, it would be.
Well, Adams or the one or?
Yeah.
Office right over there, office on the corner of that Seventeenth and Avenue H.
I mean, it's from.
Yeah, it's an old home.
Yeah, 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 it's got the brick, not the brick layout, but like the rock layout on the front of it, right? Is that it?
With a, no, you're probably thinking about Lady Cross Street, but, um, trying to think of, I have a sign called Nobara. Yeah, so here, there's just one block over.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um. So parks, we had four spots on Park Trash, didn't we? That counts, got a team look.
He didn't want to.
So it's, so he's only one of the vacant.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, we do. We have four.
That's a good board, too.
We tried to follow districts. That's why we were asking, just to make sure we have. You know, a, a wide array of people from different sides.
Different areas, yeah.
Um, we have two in District Thirty-One, and District Four, and then a city, a general city. Available. Any questions for us?
No, no, sorry. I mean, just kind of filling it out. That's all there is, so.
So you said you and your wife, right? Do y'all have kids?
No, no kids. No, uh, you know, hopefully in the near future, but yeah, nothing now, nothing to plan just yet, so, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that'll be fun.
You can't go back.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
So our process is, um, after this meeting tonight, we'll sit down, the four of us with Mr. Wellen will. We'll get everybody slotted in.
Of course.
And then we'll approve everyone, um. Uh, on Thursday night. Should get a call or an email on Friday. To, uh, let you know where you've been slotted in. I think Danny said that if he's put on another, you, you call before we approve. Uh, unless it's his requested board, right? Okay, so you'll about Friday?
Thank you so much.
You can, if you'll stand in front of the door here, a light will come on above you.
That's nice.
Is she here? Is Kennedy here?
Oh, I've not decided, uh, we don't wanna have kids, but I'll tell them tonight.
Guys, we're divorcing you.
Hey, how's it going?
How are you?
I'm doing good.
Good to see you.
You too.
Kenny, this is Zoe Graham and Mike Wilkinson.
We know you folks.
Yeah, we saw Tommy a little earlier.
Yeah. And your grandmother, we know more about you. Very good, so, um. She is down, she's in District Four. We confirmed it. Where do you live?
I live in Westfield and the map whenever I was applying would not pull up, so I don't personally know if I'm in District.
You may be in mine.
What's the close? It's mixed.
What's your address?
Seven, eight, zero, eight Fieldstone Drive.
Okay.
We were just talking about how we have so many young people coming in, so thank you so much. I really, it is.
First few years we did this, we just saw the same people that it's, you know, kind of revolved in the yard. Alright, so. She has, uh. Put here, she's interested in the library, neighborhood revitalization and parks. So Kenny, it's pretty simple process. We just, um. Got four very easy questions that really just in our conversation, you answer all four of them. So. Tell us a little bit about yourself. Tell us why you're interested in serving, you know, what talent or experience we can bring to the library, R E B or others. Just tell us about yourself.
Okay, um, I am, I think that we all know my people. I born and raised in Temple and I don't plan on going anywhere anytime soon, so.
She's engaged, by the way.
I am engaged, yes, um. Um, and yeah, like I said, don't plan on going anywhere. Gonna bring the fiance to me, cause he loves Temple too. Um, I graduated from Texas A and M University at twenty with my bachelor's in psychology. And right now I work for Edward Jones as the Senior Branch Office Administrator. Been there for five and a half years and. Again, don't plan on going anywhere, so just trying to make my roots here and just get more involved. Um, I am the recording secretary for Altrusa right now. And I love being on Altrusa, but just kind of wanna dive a little bit deeper into that, you know.
When are you getting married? Just out of curiosity.
Next November.
Okay, you got a little while.
Yes, well, I'm studying to become a financial advisor right now, so that's taking. Yes, gotta save up money and I'm a planner down to the very second. So I'm not in any rush to try to do that while studying too.
Yeah, I understand. Very good.
Um, library, I wanted to do that one just because I volunteered at the library whenever I was. I think eleven, twelve, thirteen, whatever I was young. Um, so I just figured that would be a good starting place since I was kind of a little bit more familiar with that one. Um, the other two just seemed fun. I'm not gonna lie. I don't know a whole lot about either of those things or what they would entail, but they just. Seems like a good start.
Do we decide on District Two?
Or I walk.
Okay, so would you say that out of your choices here, the ones you put down, that library would be your number one?
Yes, but I mean, I'm not.
Is there anything you would not want to serve?
I just kind of figured not like airport advisory or P and Z, you know, those seem a little bit advanced. For someone just jumping into it and with my dad and grandma being on those, I kind of know what comes with that. So again, I think those three just would be a good starting place, but again, I'm open.
I ran for city council without serving on the board.
Okay, well.
Well.
Well, I, I agree with you. I think all three of these boards are not, not just a starter board, but they're all very, um. Active boards. I think there are people that enjoy what they're doing and so you will learn a lot as you go. I think that's.
And you'll make a ton of contacts, you know, there's not, especially I think with, um, someone at your age coming in. You know, you'll meet some of the, the older folks, right, that, that, um, are really enjoy Temple and what it is and what it offers and. So it's, it's good for, you know, all ages to, you know, up and down the spectrum to, to get to know Temple and, and what it does.
Right.
Of course, you have a head start with Lester and.
I do, yes. I am very blessed and I always go to the Calm and Carolals and Carrie Ball and all that, cause my grandma always buys a table. And she actually asked me today if I wanted to go to the lunch on Wednesday at the City.
Yeah.
I'll be there too.
Tim's gonna be the superstar.
Yeah, I did see that. Yeah, so I just wanted to see people more on a business level, I guess, than just, hey, I see you at every single fundraiser.
Right.
So.
Yeah, it's nice to start kind of digging in.
Yeah, and actually getting to know people.
Well, we appreciate that.
Like that would be one thing that would be hard. Maybe you can speak to this, um, is having grown up here, right? Everybody knows you as Michelle's granddaughter. And then, you know, to sort of, you know, that, I don't know, do it adult things, I guess, is, um.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do, is just kind of get my own name and not just being Michelle's granddaughter and Lester's daughter.
Right, no, I get it. I get it. Did you?
Start somewhere.
Was that a challenge for you or? It'll be the long, lifelong template except for.
I mean, I, I feel the same way. I mean, I felt like. I, I wasn't, didn't have anything to hide. I had, I had good people that I was standing on their shoulders, so I was very grateful.
That's a good way to look at that.
And it definitely doesn't bother me that I'm those people to those.
Oh, no, no, of course.
I'm blessed, but you know, you gotta start making a name.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
There we are. Kennedy, buddy, someone we need to watch.
Temples, hot as fifty.
That, that was a hard lesson to learn, kind of like your city council.
Oh, yeah, you get out early and.
I don't know what I was thinking.
It seemed like such a good idea at the time. And monetarily, it was.
It was, yeah. Oh, yeah, dad loves it.
If you like to do credit stuff and walk in with a bunch, or you just put your nose to the ground.
I did, yes. I was doing about thirty to thirty-six hours every. I should have slowed it down. We're here now.
That's right.
You have any questions for us before we let you, let you go? It's a pleasure to finally meet you. How long has, I'm thinking of Stuart. Did you know, sir?
Yeah.
How long's, how long's he been gone?
He passed away in two thousand and eleven.
Yeah, I would have thought it was a little longer than that.
It feels like a lot longer than that, but again, I'm twenty-five.
Okay.
I didn't get enough time.
Yeah, super nice guy.
He was the best.
Yeah, that's, that's.
People still talk about him. I mean, you are now.
Isn't that nice?
No, that's amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's that standing on the shoulders. It just was stuck there. There's a benefit to staying in your hometown. You know? As long as the people before you.
Yeah, yeah.
They're all good people, so luckily they didn't make any too bad choices.
I was just at Northside H T V, uh, yesterday and I ran into one of my dad's friends. They said, gosh, you're doing it, Tim. He always had a joke. Like he did. And that art of the joke is kind of fallen. Wayside, don't you think? I mean, he always had a joke.
Cause now you'll think something.
I know, that's true. Everybody says.
Well, that's all we've got.
Okay.
Thank you for coming in.
Hey, how are you?
I'm good. How are y'all?
Thank you for coming a little early.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, how are you? Tim Davis.
Yeah. Jessica, I know you've been coming in y'all stores and telling us about.
Oh, thank you.
And Dr. Zoe. Know you from the Lions Club, but I think we've had a time. Very good. You good?
Water if you don't mind.
But I'll find you in here. I'm, I'm good, thank you. Um, we have a couple of questions that we wanna ask, and then in just our conversation, you'll have answered all four of the questions. So we'll just pick it off. We'll tell a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in.
Um, yeah, so I'm a lifelong resident of the greater Temple area. Uh, thank you so much. Um, I haven't really ventured off too much. Uh, went to U M H D, graduated from the Flying College of Business there. Um, and then now I am living back here, working in the community. Um, I have an econ degree, so, um, I'm passionate about, uh, the macro level of economics. And, um, I'm also passionate about people and serving as well too. Um, it's something that was ingrained in me from a very early age, so, um. I saw this, uh, vacancy available specifically for the airport advisory board.
Yeah.
So I received my private pilot's license. Um, I'm not corporate aviation, but I'm in general aviation. So, um, it's something that I really have a passion about from the hobby standpoint, so. And this vacancy came about, I felt that, um, this was a place that I could really fit all those needs and desires. That I had to serve people, serve my community and, um, really get out there and make a difference in the world too.
So do you have a plane out there?
I don't currently have a plane out there, no, I do not. Um, I, I just, it's actually been a little while, like, long. Um, started a family, got a little three-year-old girl. Uh, that requires a lot of time and attention, um, and adjustment in life, as y'all, all know, I'm sure. But, um, so I haven't flown in a while, but I am looking to get back into it, so I felt like this would also be a great opportunity. To start flying again and, um, practicing the general aviation.
So live in the county?
Correct.
Okay, so what part of the county?
Um, so I'm out in Eastville County.
Okay.
Yes. Um, very, uh, almost very eastern tip. I was looking at that, or thinking about that as I came in, I was about. Saying then I'd be the very easternmost, and I'm pretty sure there's not a representation from out that area. Um, that are much, I feel like most of the representation is less, that's where most of the growth and development of Temple's been. So, um, I would represent, I would bring, I think, an interesting perspective to the board as well too. Uh, growing up in a rural community and being that liaison with those, um, rural communities, um. Kind of know how those people think and work, so, um, of course, uh, it's a smaller population. Um, and that's not my main focus as well too, but I do think it would be nice to have some representation from them.
Yeah.
Um, and also a way to communicate and kind of know what makes them tick.
My husband always says, every once in a while, people in the soul will go east.
Yes. Yes, it's funny, in the Lions Club, they have the Follies. I don't know if y'all have ever been.
Oh, yeah.
Um, the Eastville County Boys that they, they do, so I'm like, you know, that, that's somewhat accurate to a certain extent. Oh, yes, and it, there, there are, it's amazing. There are still people that talk, I may even talk like that. People say I have a strong accent, but. Um, I don't think it's quite as strong as what they present.
Now, what do you do?
So I, um, I am currently, um, in the process of transitioning my dad's farming business. Um, I'm part owner in it and I'm going to be taking that over, so.
Wow.
Um, we, we farm out in Eastville County. We also, um, venture into Midland County and Falls County.
Wow.
As well too, but I do live in both.
You're busy.
Yes, 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 very, very busy, so, but it's me and my dad, um, who's phasing out and my brother, so. Um, I had several different careers before this. I was a salesman over at the John Deere Daily Ship and Temple. Um, went to a construction company down in, uh, Georgetown. And I actually switched gears into the financial advising and services role.
Okay.
Um, and then my dad was, approached me and said, hey, I'm done, is how to put it lightly.
Yeah.
Um, and he said, your brother can't do this by himself, and I was already kind of overseeing the business end of the, or the books. Accounting and all that. I wasn't much in the labor side of it. Um, so he said, why don't you, um, why don't you consider this? I looked into it and that is a passion of mine. That's what I've always wanted to try to do, and I said, now's the time to try to do it if I can.
Absolutely.
Yeah, all acreage, are you leasing too?
We predominantly lease about, uh, eighty to ninety percent of the land that we, uh, farm release. My dad owns all the acreage, so, uh, that is owned by us.
Okay.
But, um, yeah, so.
Dad's retirement plan.
That is Dad's.
You boys are gonna pay Dad.
Correct, yeah, yeah, so we are incorporated and then the business rents his land too, so.
Interesting.
Um, that's, that's how we currently have it set up.
That'll work out for you later.
I hope so.
What all y'all farm?
Uh, predominantly, uh, corn, wheat, and then we raise, um, breeder cows too, so. Uh, cow cap operation.
Wow, that's a lot.
It is a lot, but, um, you know, we have to feed the world, as I say, so somebody has to do it. It's something I'm passionate about. Um, sometimes I do feel like we're out on an island and people don't really understand where their food comes from. Or the process. Yeah, H T V, and so I'm like, yeah, so, um. It's always, it's always fun to talk to people about that and educate them a little bit more about where their food comes from. And I'm, I'm starting to look more into the farm-to-table as well too. Um, we have a large enough operation too that I'm venturing into trying to do more retail marketing, especially with our beef.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of that here. Um, matter of fact, we're, we're doing this Blue Zone initiative or we're, we're discussing doing it.
Okay.
And the Blue Zone folks said, where would you recommend that we go that's kind of farm-to-table? And we didn't really have a restaurant besides maybe Meg's.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't know, that, that, there's definitely a need.
Yeah, I, I think there's definitely a need and unfortunately, um, not to get political, but I started paying more attention. When R F K started talking on the TV and it's just amazing, some of the stuff that is in our food chain that isn't helping.
Right.
Um, and just the freshness aspect. Um, and just the freshness aspect of it.
There's a difference.
Is, there's a difference and I've started after selling my beef, you know, just individually kind of. Word of mouth type of thing. Um, it's amazing the difference in taste and the quality that you get. Cause I always, I always put emphasis on the steaks, cause that's what everybody wants, right? But um, I've had so many people be like, man, how about y'all's meat for the hamburger? He said, whenever you put the two side by side of the store bought versus fresh, it's just amazing.
Sorry, I can. I don't wanna get distracted.
Like, how does theirs stay red for weeks at a time?
You know, cops, Jonathan Cobb?
Yes, yes.
He's still church, what's his last name? He was church with them years ago.
I don't know Jonathan as well as I know his brother Eric.
Okay, I think he's still doing there. Does there sell them sides of beef?
Um, as far as I know, there's, there's a few people out in. You know, east of Troy, um, there's the Flummings that do it. Um, there's a. What's his name? He's a state trooper, he's doing it too. Um, so I'm not the only one doing it, but. Um, I do think it is an area that we can improve, improve our food source.
So I see on here that you are airport own. So if you, you don't, if, if we don't slot you on the airport, is there anything else that interests you?
Um, honestly, I did not look at any of the other ones, that's the. One area that I know the best and that's, that's the one that I would definitely. Yes, but um, you know, I'd be open to other ideas, obviously y'all. Know more about the workings of the different boards and y'all think there's something that I'm qualified for, I would definitely entertain. The idea, but um.
Maybe either one of the emergency services possible.
Yeah, and you don't have to.
But most people, when they come in, they, 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 you know, border two and they say, or, you know, what we normally do is say, okay, if, if you're open. What board do you not wanna serve on? Yeah, one, one lady said, nothing to do with the animals.
Both the emergency and police or city.
Oh, are they? Yeah, there may not be many.
Um, but if, if something isn't available this time, we do this again in October. And this will only keep all the information uh for two years, isn't that right? So, yeah, we could definitely, if, if that is the one that you feel most passionate about and it doesn't work this time, then we'd love to be able to.
That's all we've got.
Yeah, we so appreciate you coming on a Monday, on St. Patrick's Day, where's your green?
You know. You know, we, we predominantly run John Deere tractors, so. Oh, yeah, yeah, the construction side is yellow, so, but on the ag side, it's all, it's all green and.
Are you gonna do one tractor for, everything's now twenty thousand more expensive like pickups?
Uh, I would venture to say it's. About twenty thousand dollars more, it's, it, everything. That's, that's one of our main challenges in our business is the cost of equipment. Repairs and, as you may know, like repairs and just the upfront purchase.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, and the deaf.
That's uh. Expensive, the equipment's expensive with the deaf and it breaks down a lot.
Really? Well, that was supposed to be good for the environment, not good for your repair. Good for John Deere repair.
That is correct. We haven't had a whole lot of problems on the ag side on, on with the deaf systems. Watch it, it, now, now I say that and then. I don't know if they've done something different or probably we're not as hard on our equipment as the construction companies.
Yeah, that's.
A little more family business.
I was gonna say, we have a select few people that operate our equipment, it's not just anybody that we can hire or. You know, hired hand working it most of the time, so I think that may make a difference.
Yeah, I'm sure it does. Alrighty.
As a baby.
You do it as an adult, please?
I still go in there whenever I can, but being on the east side, y'all made a little bit more.
Just get on the loop.
Y'all have a good one.
Alright, take care.
Ten days. Thank you for accommodating us.
Yeah.
We've been here since one. You think we do say before we go down? Alright, we'll see.
Alright, therefore, D S A B and the library is what you mentioned you might be interested in.
Yeah, I was honestly just selecting ones that were at open seats.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I gotcha.
I feel like zoning too.
Okay.
That's something that's open.
Yeah. I think so. So anyway, thank you for being here. We really definitely appreciate you being willing to serve. We have a couple of questions and in the process of just having a discussion, you will have to answer all the questions. So we'll start off with just tell a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving.
So I'm twenty-six. I work at Temple College. I've lived in Bell County my entire life, mainly Belton. I did live in Temple last year and then I went back to Belton. Just looking to give back to my community and.
What do you do at Temple College?
I'm in the admissions office, kind of wait in the door hopefully.
So you're about to get a new building.
Yeah.
That's exciting.
Yeah, it's something alright.
It's fun to watch it. Yeah, it's going up quick.
I went to school there too, so it's definitely. I went about ten years here, but. Nice to see you growing.
Yeah, most definitely.
Community.
Yes. So. Do you have any like real specific interest in anything that like you mentioned libraries? Do you read?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm big. He's colorblind.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. We all have disabilities. I usually stick more to your books now because we're short on time.
Yeah.
I definitely love reading. Bookshelf full with books. Lots of books.
So you said you're interested in zoning too?
Yeah, I like land and development.
Yeah, there's a lot going on right now.
Yeah, that too.
And then you listed airport. Do you?
It seemed interesting.
It is.
Yeah.
Do you have any airport or flying experience?
No, sir. Lots of plane rides. You would know. No.
You've been stuck at baggage car.
So you're twenty-six. Maybe you've entered already, but. Why have you decided the city? Why have you decided you want to serve and then why the city of Temple?
So. I moved to Temple and Belton. Obviously, I live in Belton, but I have lived in Temple too and I work in Temple. To me, Temple and Belton are the same. I've lived here my entire life. And I feel like it'd be good to give back to the community I grew up in.
Okay.
And why not serve in the community I live in?
Yeah, yeah. No, that's that's great.
I'm not looking to be a big political person, my heart, but I wouldn't mind serving in the city I live in.
Sure.
It's gonna affect me at the end of the day too.
Yep.
And. Yeah, why not have a voice in?
Yeah, no, I agree.
It's gonna affect me and my family.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's definitely, I know.
Better than just sitting back and complaining.
Oh gosh.
Try and do something, whether that be voting or serving.
Yeah, do something.
Being a part of the community I live in.
Well, we certainly appreciate that as volunteers ourselves.
I figured that could be a good place to, you know, get a start.
Yep.
Volunteers get you put in the door.
Absolutely.
Maybe you like it, maybe I don't.
Kind of gets in your heart, you know?
Yeah.
Lots of people, they think, oh, just try it for a little while and then ten years later, you're still doing something. So that's great.
So we have a couple of boards that meet at different times. Some work for people and some do not. So some of the ones that you were kind of interested in, would it be difficult for you to get away from work for an hour?
Uh, it just depends what time. I'm sure if I knew ahead of time, I could probably plan accordingly.
Yeah, and most of them are once a month and it's just for an hour. So like. Animal, well, you didn't have that on there, but Air Force Five P M. So that wouldn't be an issue for you, but libraries at noon. The zoning stuff is really as needed.
Yeah.
So maybe once a quarter they'll meet. And it's usually what time does it? Mike, what time do they?
The.
Just like the Z B A and D S A.
Um.
It's around after you.
Right there.
My lunch is at two anyways.
Oh, so that.
I mean, I could plan if it's a once a month thing or even if it was like. I mean, I know there's usually all like once a month.
Yeah.
It's something I would plan for.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should. If my lunch I come in early an hour, you know?
Yeah, and I would hope that your your. Boss would, you know.
They're very accommodating.
Yeah.
Probably the first floor I have that is very accommodating. Yes.
Each meeting, every agenda has to be posted at least seventy-two hours prior to the meeting.
One more.
So you would always know the week before, you know, so I mean, you wouldn't know, you wouldn't hear that morning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's sometimes like, cause I took interest in the. Or I had contacted Beltline Steel because I was interested in the school board too. And that was something that shared, like all the meetings are posted. You have to two hours. I know it's not typical, but it's the same.
Yeah. Their requirements.
Yeah. Yeah.
Texas Open media. Okay. Well, good. What else we need to know?
I'm a hard worker. I'm always early. That's one thing. I'm very early person, first one to work. First one everywhere I go. Big on punctuality. They're gonna work ethic. Honest.
That's good, but that's good to hear because one, not to honest part, we expect everybody.
Yeah.
But good work ethic, because what happens a lot here is. I shouldn't say a lot, but enough that it's worth mentioning is that people make a commitment. We put you on board. We put them on the board and they don't show up. They just, oh, you know what? That wasn't really what I thought it was.
Yeah.
We take the time to do these interviews. You take the time to to go through the website, pick out some things you're interested in. And so we would, you know, we would really expect whoever to honor that commitment.
Yeah, and I'm a man of my word. I mean, if I make a commitment, I'm gonna do my best to stick to it. And if something comes up and I can't stick to it, then I'll.
Yeah.
Let you know ahead of time. I'm not gonna, I'm not one to.
Just fail.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, our policy, the city's policy is that you miss.
Twenty-five percent.
Am I really this guy? If you miss three in a row, then there are excuses. You just, you're just on, but we just remove you. So. So, you know, things come up and you cannot tip. Just let the board chair know and that's excuse.
Yeah, life is life.
It is.
I got, I got a kid, she special needs and I got another one on the way, so. I know all about that.
Yeah.
But. Doesn't know, doesn't mean you can't let other people know that it's.
Yeah, very good. We appreciate it.
I would want someone to accommodate me, so I'm gonna try.
Yeah. Any questions for us?
I mean. I guess, when did you become like a board member?
So I got on council in twenty. We've been doing this for a little bit. I think you are the longest running. When did you start? Fourteen?
Thirteen.
Twenty thirteen, yeah. I enjoy it. I really, I really do get a lot out of it. It makes me feel good.
Be involved.
I know.
And I'm big on sitting back and listening to. I don't, I don't prefer to be the star of the show in any.
Yeah.
Thing I'd rather.
Yeah, but you're, you're making small changes and people's lives for the better and it's really, it feels good.
Yeah. That's right.
I definitely wouldn't mind making a difference in the community I live in.
Yeah.
Whether that be for my family or everyone.
Yeah, and that's, we want everyone to have that same feeling. I mean, we're not just gonna go through the motions. You're gonna do something that is gonna make a change, so. Okay.
Are there any young people?
Well, we have seen a.
Just curious.
It's been very third.
Yeah.
Younger, yeah.
I've probably had five twenty, twenty-somethings today.
Yeah, I think so.
I saw one on there and I recognized it.
Who was that?
Kennedy.
Yeah, we just saw her.
They got her. I recognize her.
Yeah.
She's a same nation.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, yeah, her and there's a couple of bankers, I think.
Tyler, he's twenty-nine.
For a long time, we saw. Whenever we started this interview process, we sort of saw the same people. You know, but now that it's out there and I think maybe.
Which isn't surprising.
Around town and, yeah, I think this, you know, we're seeing some younger people.
At some point, someone's gotta step in, I mean.
Yeah.
Why step in when you're forty or fifty instead of twenty, thirty?
Yep. Most people won't have that mindset. You know?
Unfortunately.
I wasn't ready when I was your age.
I don't know if I'm ready or not, but I'm willing to try.
We threw your hat in the ring.
Yeah, that's right. All you can do.
Yep.
Yeah.
Alright, very good. We'll, we'll find a spot for you.
And I brought a copy of my resume in case.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate that. We'll pass that on to you. Well, we like, we like those people.
Again, it's always punctual. We really all hope we guys best prepared.
Bro, I try my best. That's what I was, it was instilled in me.
Yeah. Very good. Well, thank you. That's all we got for you.
Thanks.
You guys, thanks for coming in early.
Yes, sir.
We'll look you out here. Alright.
I will.
Yes. Brother, we. Have we already slotted everybody?
Yep.
Alright, I'm gonna, I'm missing.